Do you have allegiance?
I do have allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Opplin, if you'll do the TV coverage announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Thompoke, Santiness Valley, Santa Maria and Orket areas. Rebroadcast of planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Brown, here. Commissioner Brooks, here. Commissioner Valencia, here. Commissioner Blau, here. And for the record, Commissioner Cooney is absent today.
Thank you. Ms. Black, if you'll now do the agenda status report and the projection report.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We have four items on our agenda today, three permit items and a status update. Item number one, we will be discussing, and staff is going to recommend a continuance on that, whether or not the Commission wants to hear it first or not is up to the Commission. Item number two is ready to move forward, and item number three, the applicant has requested a continuance to July 8th so that he has a full planning commission available for that decision. And then we're ready to move forward with the briefing on item number four. With respect to the projection report, we do have our next hearing as a special hearing in Santa Maria on June 29th, which is a Monday, and that is anticipated to be the Commission's final hearing on the Santiness Community Plan. July 1st, your Commission's suggestion has been canceled. We've been able to combine the hearing items from July 1st into the 8th and 15th. July 8th will be a Santa Barbara hearing, and July 15th will be a Santa Maria hearing. The next hearing of your Commission following those July hearings will be August 5th, and on that date, we're projecting the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden item be heard, and that will probably be the only item we will hear that day. I'm in the process of putting together a longer-term projection report for the rest of this calendar year, and hopefully at your first hearing in July, regular hearing in July, I'll be able to present that to you so you have a little better idea as to what the rest of the year looks like for the Commission's work. And that's all I had intended to point out on your projection report.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners seeing none? I'd like to go ahead and have Ms. Opplin read item number three to the record. We'll go ahead and continue it first, if that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Pat Nesbit, appellant and owner, to consider case number 09APL10, appeal filed on April 22nd, 2009, for an appeal of the Director Determination for an Administrative Interpretation to Modify A Track Map Condition, TM14290, to provide temporary secondary access into the Montecito Ranch Estates.
Great, and I think what the Chair will do is entertain a motion. We went to July 8th hearing. Can you go to the July 8th hearing?
So moved. I'll second.
Ms. Opplin, if you'll read the roll call.
Commissioner Brown, aye. Commissioner Brooks, aye. Commissioner Valencia, aye. Commissioner Blau, aye. Vote carries 4-0.
Great, thank you. This is the time of the meeting when we allow public comment for items not on today's agenda. I do have one slip for Mr. Thorndike. If anyone else wishes to speak, you need to give Commissioner Brown a slip like this one.
Good morning, Commission. I'm John Thorndike of Torre Canyon, and I'm here to address Noel Lengels' ordinance amendment for two-year extensions for which I believe you may have approved, and it may be pending in the Board of Supervisors. Is that true? All right. It's relative, in my case, to hardship due to time constraints on a taking of real estate on my property. Now, the county wants the property abutting my property to be protected by my property, which has a, what they call a retaining wall, which is like a colosseum, which is plum on top of my well. Now, the Artesian well unfortunately extends 160 feet beyond that location, so I can, if forced, to access it. But I want to give the county what they want, and I don't want to give them any more. Now, they did an appraisal for me for $4,500. The appraisal was done by Reader, Gilman, and Million. I like the ring of that. And they came out a little low, though, just an margin low, like 50% less than the county's (laugh) appraisal. Well, I thought it was a fair appraisal by my man of what they want, not of the whole property. The property entry is well below what they want, and the entryway is an orchard, an avocado and citrus orchard. And I would like to park there, and they've given me a hard time. I've had lost seven vehicles. One of them wasn't even mine (laugh), but they were lost off my property. And the reason was I sold to the wrong man. He was a broker, and he was a lawyer, and he just had too much knowledge. And he's been a bit of a pain. But anyway, he's old and I'm young. I'm going to outlast some, that's how I'll handle it. But I was relieved to know that a very good man, Noel Lengels', request, has gone through you and is pending before the Board of Supervisor, and I'd like to be included in that because I am penalized somewhat. I don't have any cars anymore. I have to take the Amtrak, which is all right with me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndike.
Maybe Mr. Baker has something to add to that, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndike. Now, we'll go to Planning Commissioners informational reports. I see no lights. We'll go to Planning and Development Divisional briefings. Don't have any? Then I think we'll go ahead and do the Director's Report for the Board of Supervisors hearings.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission. Item from yesterday, the Perez Appeal, if you recall that one with the exterior entrance and such, that was facilitated out by County Council's office, so it was agreed upon and it went away yesterday, so that was a positive result. Last week, we had budget hearings, and as a result of those hearings, the recommendations that we had made in order to meet the target that we had been given for our general fund budget, they decided not to make those reductions, so we are going to be continuing our same level of code enforcement and the counter hours, which we were talking about reducing because those are general fund options. As you know, a lot of, most of what we do is revenue-driven, and so when we're giving a reduction that we have to meet in general fund, we had very little places, very few places that we could go. So those were restored. And the last item that I would point out, that if you watched yesterday's meeting, you might have missed this right at the very front end, that the County Council actually announced that upon my exiting, the end of this month, first part of next month, Diane is going to be the interim Director until there is a selection of the Director.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That's it.
Okay, thanks. We do have some minutes that we need to approve. I'm sorry. Richard Blunt, you?
Mr. Chair, I failed when you gave Planning Commissioners informational reports. I failed to mention that I had asked Mr. Cohen, the representative of the Schumash, about a site visit, and he said we could either go by ourselves or call up. I chose to go by myself, and I did a site visit, and I found that it was easy to get around the nation and the housing properties and all. Very interesting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We do have a couple of cents of minutes to approve, so I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of May 27th.
So moved. I'll second.
Any comments from Commissioners seeing none? Ms. Opplin.
Commissioner Brown, aye. Commissioner Brooks, aye. Commissioner Valencia, aye. Commissioner Blau, aye.
One second, I'm making sure this is a special meeting. I'm going to abstain, thank you.
Vote carries 3-0-1.
And now, I'll entertain a motion for the hearing to approve the minutes of June 3rd.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Corrections? Ms. Opplin.
Commissioner Brown, aye. Commissioner Brooks, aye. Commissioner Valencia, aye. Commissioner Blau, aye. Vote carries 4-0.
Okay. And now, we'll go to our standard agenda, item one. If you'll read that into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Ms. Susan Petrovich, agent for the Appellants, Mr. and Mrs. Marabian, to consider the appeal, case number 08APL29, appeal filed on August 11th, 2008, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15268 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. And now, I'll ask for Commissioners for expertise on site visits. Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you, Chair Blau. I did visit the site, and I was there on the behalf of, I was invited to come over to the Merrill property. Thank you.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site initially and discussed the project with the homeowners.
Commissioner Brown.
I spent an hour on the site, walking around with Ms. Merrill, and had an opportunity to see both sites actually, from various positions. Thank you.
And for myself, I made the site visit this morning on the way up. So I see Mr. Karamitza is in Santa Maria, so I assume you're going to give us a staff report, and I will comment that although I may be continued, I see everybody here in the audience, I think that's the applicant and the appellant, and I have a number of questions of staff, so I think I'd like to go ahead and hear the item, and if we deem it appropriate to continue at the end of the hearing, I think that'll be fine. Would staff agree with that?
Mr. Chair, that's fine if that's what your Commission wishes. We are going to be requesting that you continue this for some period of time because we believe we need to do an initial study and SEQA document to adequately cover the review of this project, so, just so you know where we're going.
And I still think it would be helpful to maybe hear it and see what the questions are, because you may answer my questions later on in the process, and we'll be able to today. Mr. Karamitza, if you will be so kind.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and everyone. I appreciate the opportunity you attend remotely. This subject project is the Marabian Appeal of the Huntsaker Merrill Horse Arena. It's been continued from your Commission a number of times, most recently April 8th. The materials in front of you should include a memo for today's hearing dated June 5th and a staff report that was dated December 19th for the January 21st hearing. We also received a letter from Susan Petrovich dated June 5th regarding this matter, and as Ms. Black indicated, we are requesting a continuance today so that we can prepare the appropriate SEQA document. As you know, ministerial permits that are issued by PND do not involve SEQA review, and however, once they're appealed, we have been preparing SEQA exemptions, and although the first submittal of this project to your Commission did not have a SEQA exemption, a subsequent memo provided a 15268 ministerial exemption. We've determined that exemption should not apply here, and nor can the Section 15304 Minor Alterations to Land exemption apply because the project involves earthwork in a drainage course, waterway. And as a result, we've determined after careful consideration that an initial study should be prepared, and while we expect that to indicate a negative declaration, because we have conditioned the project, as you see in the attachment of the memo for the revised land use permit, of course, the initial study could determine that there are no mitigations necessary, or alternatively, that an environmental impact report is required. But the first step that we're asking of your Commission is to prepare that initial study, and I've spoken with the applicant and the appellant's representative regarding this, and I'm glad they're in attendance today. In the memo that was docketed for today's hearing, you'll find a background section that discusses the revised plans. There's still disagreement between the plans that were submitted and the appellant's review by their professional of those plans, and staff's objective in this matter is to ensure that we clearly depict the situation as it exists on the ground today, and then condition the project to ensure that it's consistent with our rules and regulations. We had a meeting on April 1st of this year with PND staff, the applicant, Ms. Merrill, and Ms. Petrovich, the appellant's representative, as well as Ron Rohr of Flowers and Associates. And while that was a good meeting, there were numerous areas of agreement. There still are some areas where the appellant has additional concerns and requests. I think with that, I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation for this morning's hearing. I apologize for that. But with that, I would leave it to questions from your Commission and response to the applicant and appellant's concerns.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Karamitza, the initial study, will it, what is the scope of the review or the considerations in the initial study?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the baseline that we will use will be the, as best as we can characterize the site before the recent earthwork modifications to the arena, and then the subsequent revisions to the drainage plan, if you will, or the drainage provisions that have been created on site. So that will be the baseline, and then, so the scope will be the earthwork and the improvements from that point in time. And there is substantial background on this site over the last 20, 25 years, the creation of ponds, which you saw out there in the arena, and then the subsequent expansion of the arena. So that will be the project that is applied, and we will look at each issue area in the initial study as required by law, and expect most of those to be very straightforward, but the flooding and drainage and the land use, I expect, will have some analysis and detail in there.
Does, is the study just going to look at this parcel solely, or is there going to be a slighter, broader look? Because when you talk about earthwork in a drainage course, is, and perhaps this question is too premature, but in just looking at sort of the lay of the land, if you will, of the parcels there, the drainage course seems to encompass two properties.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, we will certainly look at the Marabian property as well. As you know, this appeal was in large part precipitated by a deposition of soil during a storm event onto the Marabian's property, where that material came off of the arena and was deposited on their property. We also will look at the drainage area, the watershed of this particular area, and we've already done some preliminary work. Jeff Thomas of Building and Safety will now be working with me on this. It was previously another grading inspector, as you see in the record, David Bianello. But, so we will be looking at a broader area than the subject parcel.
Mr. Karamitza, give me some idea of the time it's going to take to do this and the cost to prepare the EIR? Or the study, I should say, maybe with neg deck.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's going to take a number of hours. I'm going to do my best to assist in keeping that to a minimum, but I'd have to say a minimum of 10 to 15 hours would be my reasonable estimate. As you know, as things come up, that could increase, but based on the amount of work and review that's gone into this to date, and presuming, and you'll hear from the appellant's representative, the need for professional engineered plans, county staff is continuing to assert that that is not necessary in this case, but we will have to address that, and the public comment for the draft document when it goes out, I expect to, if we haven't addressed it already, receive that comment. So 10 to 15 hours and 2 to 3 months.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask the appellant to make their presentation. Ms. Petrovich, are you here on behalf of the appellant? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. We were looking for our PowerPoint that was emailed to the county, and maybe Mr. Karamitza knows where that is. I sent it to him yesterday, but in any event, Mr. Flowers will be speaking after I am. My name is Susan Petrovich, and I am the representative of Robert and Victoria Marabian. First, I do want to thank the staff for all their hard work on this project. As you can see from my many letters, this has had a long history. I'm not going to repeat all of that information, but I do want to emphasize that the entire issue arose from what was an unfortunate chain of events that began with grading in a stream or drainage channel without first obtaining a permit. Now, that has had impact on the Marabian property, which of course is directly adjacent, but it had impacts downstream as well. It carried silt into the culvert that serves the property downstream, immediately downstream of the Marabian property, and further downstream from that property is a much larger stream. So this is just a tributary to a much larger system, and so having silt traveling downstream is not just damaging to private property, but also to our water systems. On April 4, 2007, grading inspector Tom DeFazio conducted a site visit and told Ms. Merrill that she needed a permit for the grading and filling that she had performed on her property. It took over a year for her to apply for the permit, and in the interim, the Marabian property suffered both erosion and sedimentation during the rainy season. The Marabians really feel that this problem must have final resolution before this winter. The county, by coincidence, I was listening to NPR the other day, and they were reporting that although this part of California's endured below average rainfall for four years, this year meteorologists have detected warm currents off of Peru, which is a precursor to El Nino. If we have an El Nino condition and this problem is not resolved, there could be significant damage, not just to the Marabian property, but potentially to the Merrill property as well. Because of the flood threat, the Marabians are not prepared to concur in what still is a halfway measure that reduces the carrying capacity of the channel, but they do firmly believe that the following conditions are essential to reducing the hazard, and we're pleased that there's going to be additional environmental review that will perhaps flesh this out a bit. First, regrading the eastern bank of the swale so that it's at the same elevation as the western bank, so when there's a breakout, it flows equally across both properties, not just across the Marabian property. Delete the water bars in the swale so the silt doesn't build up behind them and reduce the carrying capacity of the swale. No further modifications to the swale structure should occur without further permits to avoid it being compromised, and when I say modifications, I don't mean repairs and maintenance because it's clearly going to require ongoing repair and maintenance. It is the only channel now for this water, and its capacity is limited. Install a boulder field at the southern end of the Merrill property as an energy dissipator because the water's now been narrowed down into a smaller channel than it used to travel through, and without an energy dissipator at that part of the property, it's going to just shoot like a water cannon out onto the Marabian property. Require that a professional inspect and oversee the maintenance, repair and replacement of the swale, its fabric, and other elements of the system to ensure that it remains intact, doesn't silt up or become eroded, and absolutely require that any further modification of the topography and improvements on the Merrill property have a permit before they're undertaken. This is such a fragile situation with so much potential for flood damage that allowing any further incremental changes to this property would create a hazard. So I'll just conclude by saying that the Marabians continue to be concerned about the flooding and sedimentation potential. They're certainly not waiving their rights as between them and Ms. Merrill should their property be further damaged, but that's really between the Merrills and the Marabians. It's not the county's issue regarding liability, but we believe that the county will want to have this situation remedied for everyone's sake. The Marabians ask that you consider the information that Mr. Flowers now will present to you and either grant the appeal or require that the land use permit be revised in response to the problems inherent in the Merrill project. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Ms. Petrovich, when did the Marabians install their retaining wall?
It was, it was after the fill and grading, but I don't know the exact date.
'07, '08?
'07 or '08, yeah.
Did they conduct any studies to ascertain the effects of installing that wall on the drainage course, which encompasses both properties?
The drainage course, the wall comes down to the corner, and you did a site visit. They had not experienced flooding on their lot to the west of the Merrill property before, and they've lived there for over 20 years, so they had never had any flooding on their property before this would be the winter of 2007, 2008. So they, the only reason why they put that wall up was they saw the fill, and it was clear, and what you're seeing today is not the condition that it was in when the rain came. They could see that the drainage channel had been blocked, and they could see that the water was going to have to come somewhere and that it would come over directly onto their property, and so that's why they installed the wall. So they didn't do a study. Mr., Dr. Marabian is an engineer himself, so he could see the danger to his property.
Right, but there was no, all right, fine, thank you.
There has never been a hydrology study by anybody, as far as we know.
Thank you. You have another, Mr. Flower.
Thank you.
Jessica, did it come? No.
Jessica, do you have a? Jessica, do you have a, in that PowerPoint, is there a map of the property at all that we could put up on the screen? Mr. Flowers, go ahead, thank you.
Chairman Blau, members of the commission, Bob Flowers, Flowers and Associates. I believe we have something that we can put up? If we can put them on the overhead or... I apologize, we had a PowerPoint set up and it apparently didn't transfer over the E. Let me continue. Our firm was asked to, by Mr. Marabian, to advise him in this matter after the 2007, '08 winter rains and they had the deposition of the imported material onto their properties. And at that point in time, he had put up the little barrier to protect his property. If we can look, if we can get the slides or these overheads set up, maybe I can... Hopefully, these will be in the same order we had. We had an initial aerial photograph from 1981, which you can see, let's see here.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Valencia? Could we get Mr. Flowers to identify the lots first?
Yes.
Because the flow is in an empty lot, correct?
That is correct.
Identify the lots, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Here is a baseline, and then this is Monarch, the two properties involved. This is the Merrill property on the corner, at that time unoccupied, undeveloped. This is the Marabian residence parcel and his, their secondary parcel here, pasture land, as it existed then. And I believe this is 1981. So this shows the water course, flowway coming generally here. And that's fairly agreeing with the county aerial topo, even though it's only five-foot contours. But generally speaking, that is a very gradual, flat swale, about 2%. And you can see that that crossed right here, that still exists today, generally speaking, across this property. So then the next slide was back in 1987, different time of year, in March, springtime. The Marabians have further improved their property. Again, we have the same flow condition across what will be the Merrill property. And in 2004, the same properties involved here. This is the development then of a couple of ponds in the flowway and a arena area down in the corner here. But the flowway had the two ponds and generally was diverted slightly away from this arena area at that time by the contours. We understand that historically, this initial development here, this resident, lowered these ponds in the wintertime to allow some, if you will, retention. So this is, even though this is 2004, this is fairly close to what's there or what was there prior to the improvements or changes that were made in this corner of the property. And then we've got some, after the 2008, or 2007, actually. Here's some photographs that were taken. This is from the Marabian property. It's not very clear. But we're looking just after a rainstorm at the water coming out of the ponds across the Merrill property and through, this is not the arena area, but it's a material, imported material. And then the next slide would show basically the same thing. You're getting a piece of the arena here that was done at that time. And then the next photo. What, this is really what caused the problems and the result appeal. The material at that time was brought in and all the way over to the fence. Generally speaking, there was no way for water to get through. This fence had been added. The flow came down here as opposed to spreading across the property as it once did. But this, all this material is the material that ended up, really truly not silt, but material that was imported as a sand for the arena, the horse arena. It ended up coming on downstream across the Marabian pasture property and actually onto the next downstream property. So there's deposition of material on down quite a ways.
Before you go on, can you just put that, excuse me, Mr. Chair, that... So what is the perspective? Where is this picture being taken?
This picture is taken from the Marabian property across the corner, if you will, of that pasture land. We could go back to an aerial. But this is the pasture piece, if you will, separate from the Marabian residence.
Just be just a second. Ms. Hoplin, could you put this up on that tack board for me?
Commissioner Brown, approximately, that would be the path of the photograph.
Right, so the, someone taking the picture would be standing...
Maybe here at the corner, approximately of the Marabian property. So this is, in my opinion, what primarily caused the concerns and the reasons to make an appeal and try to correct this situation so that it wouldn't happen again. And then we have some additional photographs of the situation as it is today.
Just a question, if you don't mind. Am I correct that this is the low point of the property, right here?
That's correct, yes. It is a wide, very wide, flat swale. I mean, it's not what we would call a creek.
Okay.
At any, it's just a pasture land. As you can see here, it's similar across that whole area, both those properties.
Right, but that is the, that is the low point of the property, right, where my pointer is?
That's correct.
So it's all going to flow to that point at some point?
At this point, yes, because we have the fence, we have the barriers, and it's been channeled that way. We believe at this point, because of what's happened, there should be some engineering done. I mean, there's been some major improvements. I mean, it's so much better than it was. There's no question. We have some objections, you know, some technical questions and suggestions to that.
And also...
Excuse me.
Go ahead. I also understand that there's a culvert that has water that's not flowing, sheet flowing someplace in this area that actually feeds the two ponds?
From the intersection of the Monarch and baseline. That's, that's correct.
Okay, I'll have some questions for Mr. Kermitz when we're done.
All right.
Thank you. Go ahead, continue if you want. I think Mr. Brown has a question as well.
I'm sure there'll be some questions. All right, our office, Mr. Rohr participated in some discussions and so forth. Improvements were made, a plan was done, which I believe the commissioners all have. The improvements aren't quite for the plan. And if I can just give a simple suggestion of my concerns as an engineer with that plan is the longevity of how it's actually constructed now. We have a, if we can. We prepared some simple sections of what, not what was designed, but what ended up there. And two different sections, you can show if we put up those sections, Susan, we can see how flat this is. These are true scale sections. I'm sorry for the, yeah. Best we can, we'll see them here. This is the one that's initially upstream, and this is true scale. This is, and I cannot read the distances at this point. This is about seven, eight, 15 feet here, to give you a true sense of scale. Here's the property line. These are sections across the arena area. This is the grade increase in the arena. And the plan calls for a V-swale here. And what we actually have is a straw wattle barrier, kind of a retainer, which will disintegrate over time. So that's a problem. It's major steps forward, but over time, this will require somebody to pay attention to this. There is a mass improvement also because there's railroad-type barrier retaining the material for the arena. A major step. So whereas we saw before, it was right against the fence, this is a good step. What Ms. Petrovich was talking about is continued maintenance. Don't change this in the future, but correct it now. We have a liner, fabric liner here that is not going to last. If there is silt disposition, there's no way, deposition, there's no way to clean it up. So we have some concerns along those lines, saying that needs to be continuous maintenance of this. And it's to be put in closer per plan, get the degradable material out of the flowway. I think that if those improvements, if those conditions that were proposed were put in place and continued with, I think they would not have any further disagreements. And we suggest that it's because it's gone this far that an engineer take a look at some hydraulics, hydrology, and actually study this flowway a little bit. I mean, no one's done that. And at this point, because of this disagreement, I think would be a good idea.
Mr. Brown?
Are you through, Mr. Flower?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, 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 that's, hang on. I just wanted you to go back to the first, the very first picture that Ms. Petrovich put up there because I have some questions for you on that very first picture. The photo. No, that wasn't the first picture. Very first one you showed was an aerial.
If we can find that.
Would you just explain what I'm seeing here? Dan, would you give me the... My question is, can you, this is the water course. Is this, is that correct?
Yes, and it's not well-defined. Even in those days, it wasn't there, but you can tell there's no creek in...
No, but so the water, in your opinion, would, is just flowing this way? Because this is the low point here, as Chair Blau said. So the water is coming down this way? This would be the natural flow of water throughout? If these weren't parcellized, they'd just be flowing from here to here?
I think that's, I think that's correct. And you can see by the vegetation there, it's generally along that line.
Okay, and so the property line now is something like this? So what is the property line? Do you have something that you can show me with the...
It's more like that.
Okay. Okay, so it goes. Okay, so if you put the other picture back. Thank you. So my question is, hydrolically, hydrologically, if you were to look at both, all these properties, that the water is just going to flow from the high point over here to the low point, wherever it is, over here somewhere? Is that, is that correct? I mean, is that sort of generally...
Generally, that's correct, of course.
And that in this picture, because there was no fence, no retaining wall, no, the land was just all is probably at its natural grade over time, there was, the water would be distributed over both properties such that any flows would be not fast, but they would just kind of meander over?
There's enough flowway here, really, as you can see in those photos where we looked at here, it's so flat, that generally speaking, the flow, it's not going to be over here.
No, but it's going to be...
And again, I haven't run any hydraulics, but I don't see the watershed as being big enough that we're going to have a major flowway that'll cut across this.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is that water would be flowing, I presume, let me ask you. Is this corner higher than this corner, than this area?
It was sheeting across without any control?
It would sheet, yeah, so it would be sheeting from, say, here all this way? With no structures, no nothing? That's how the normal course of events would occur over these two properties.
Yeah. So the question, Commissioner Brown, was, is this higher than?
No, I guess my question is, no, my question is, just without any, if this is unadorned, unadulterated grading, just the way the property was, properties were originally many years ago, that without any development, when it rained, the water would flow from this way down to here, right? So it would be sheet flowing across both these properties. It wouldn't be, just couldn't be confined to the Merrill property.
I think if we put up that, yes, that topo, we can clarify the question, maybe the answer here. Yeah, there we go. This is at a different, this is the county topography, five-foot contours from years ago, I think '93. This, you can see the contours of elevation here. This, again, is Marabian's piece here. There's the Merrill piece, and this is that second Marabian piece. There, at this point, there's the two ponds. This is developed here at this point. You can see the, you can see how flat this is. Okay, this is, this is five feet across some, quite some distance. It's a little steeper on here. And this, at that time, just connecting, as you would, very simply, five feet, you're direct, you're seeing that condition. Whether this was graded in this development slightly, probably was. You know, we can't talk about that too much because we really don't know. I'd have to get back and examine the development of the initial development of this property. But at any rate, you can see where it was after this residence put in, the ponds put in. And generally speaking, by the, looking at the earlier aerials, it's somewhat the same, although it looks like it meandered a little bit here and there without those ponds directing it right here. So if that answers your question or helps clarify it, all right.
My only question is, I'll just, I'll just give you my observation, let you comment on it. It's my understanding that there is no requirement to retard the basin that comes out of this culvert. Even if we were to have a hydrology study and so forth, county does not particularly, does not usually require you to retard pass-through water. You're only required to retard the water on your site that you create by putting things like hard surfaces in there that would concentrate the flow. But what I couldn't figure out is, if the issue was just the siltation, it seemed to me it would be real simple. You'd dig this ditch a little deeper, you'd put the same kind of rock treatment that they have in that little area from this pond to the driveway, and that would filter out any silt before it ever got to this point right here. All this water gets to that point there anyway. I don't care if it's sheet flowing or how it's flowing. And it seems to me that if it's sheet flow, you're going to get a much bigger chance for siltation than you did if you put this into this little rock channel where it would take the siltation out. Am I missing something here?
I think Chair Blau just tried to address that. I believe that's where the intent of what was done, with the exception of the rock by the Baki, by the Merrill plan. I think that's what they've tried to do, and it's almost there. There's no rock involved at this point. There's discussion at the...
Well, you're an engineer, you should be able to tell me pretty easily. I mean, if we took this whole area and dug it out a little deeper, whether you put that film in the bottom of it or not, doesn't make any difference to me, but maybe it'd help. But if this was full of two or three-foot worth of rock in here, very similar to what they've done right here, then the problem is solved. Or am I missing something?
No, you're not missing anything. I think that if we were as deep as the plan calls for, the rock, obviously traps silt. That would be a problem for cleaning from their standpoint. So really, I think, and if we were designing something, we'd have the grass swale similar to what they have. There were some, I think Ms. Petrovich mentioned, there were some straw wattles across it. Those have been removed now. So at the end, perhaps, have a lowered basin. This was discussed at the joint meeting we had with Ron War, my office, to place that at the end. There is really no detention. It's just collecting silt before it crosses. I think you're, you and I are thinking, and everyone ought to be thinking the same way.
And I think you're, with my observation, you're not going to get much, if any, siltation coming off this property because for the most part, it's either landscaped or it's hard surface. So the only siltation you're going to get is water that is, comes in from this point over here. And it seems to me, by going through two ponds, most of it would get desilted. What little tiny bit could possibly be left over would certainly be taken care of by this large rockway. And I can't imagine any maintenance for 20 or 30 years. Or am I missing something else again there?
Again, we went back to what was there and what caused the problem and to make sure that doesn't happen again. There is import material here that potentially a little bit could come. But we have total agreement here on what you're saying. The only thing I was suggesting is that what's there is not permanent. There's some degradable material... There's some degradable materials used, and that's either going to be maintained or replaced in a permanent manner. And then the concept of putting rocks down here, that was discussed, a shallow basin filled with rock. What you're saying is rock all the way here, they could do that as well, that would be even better.
I think I'll, I know you're going to be back up for a rebuttal, so I, I'd like to maybe go ahead and hear from the, if you're down, the applicant, and then I'll, I'll ask my other questions on the rebuttal.
Unless there's a further question, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Kirby, are you going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I will briefly, Mr. Chairman, and then the applicant herself would like to say a few words and answer any questions. There's a lesson here about getting a permit.
There always is.
But it's, it's, you know, it speaks volumes about the wisdom of doing that at the front end. She would never have embarked upon this project if she'd known what was in for her in terms of having to redesign the drainage system on this property. That's certainly not the county's fault. County staff has been nothing but helpful in making suggestions and recommendations all along. She has followed every one of them in the process. Paula purchased the property in nineteen ninety-nine, about ten years ago. The prior owner had developed the property with the residential improvements and built an arena. The arena that he built was about seventy feet wide and about two hundred feet long. And that's at the same site that the existing arena is, and the one that caused the problem was reconditioned. The original arena had no perimeter around it, it was sand that was not contained. The drainage system consisted of a very small ditch, nat, probably naturally occurring along the fence line that, that you saw a little bit ago. And that system worked very well for, ever since Paula came on the property, as I said, ten years ago, and there was an uncontained sand arena there. She enlarged the one that was there slightly, increased the width, not the length. But the flow of surface waters, when they left the pond, would go down by the fence line, and in this small ditch along the perimeter of the fence line, and then what, whatever would overflow the ditch would dissipate out into the Merabian pasture land. This is all before the wall was built. And remember, in two thousand one, there was, let me get the dates correct, the, the rain year two thousand, two thousand one was twenty-six inches. The rain year in two thousand four, two thousand five produced over thirty-five inches. Substantial storm events that did not result in the kind of situation that we've seen since. Now, what happened in nineteen oh seven was unfortunate. Paula increased the width of the arena and brought it down near the fence line and covered up the ditch. And then in apparent response, Merabian built this solid concrete wall along the whole property line. Well, those two situations created an unfortunate situation, and then they had, it wasn't a particularly strong rain year, but you had the washout down there, the water had nowhere to go but down to that corner. It washed the sand that was there out with it. Ever since then, Paula has tried to make the situation better. And I, and I think I heard the appellate's expert acknowledged that the situation now is better than before. Now, I don't know what "before" he was referring to, but I don't think there's any question that the situation now on Paula's property is far better than before she did this arena work, enlarged the arena. She has improved because that swale now is wider and deeper. It's got, it's planted with this fabric liner and ryegrass to slow the velocity down and cause the, the sediments to dissipate. The arena itself is now fully enclosed with two courses of, of railroad ties, so the sand is all contained, which in his, historically had never happened. She installed a gravel base along the western perimeter of the arena so that this would further assist in keeping sand from going out underneath the railroad ties. She dug a, a siltation basin down at that corner. We've heard staff suggest lately that maybe that would be wise to increase the size of that. She's fine with that, she'll do it. She, she's basically been willing to do whatever it takes. I've told her, I told her this months ago, don't spend your money on attorneys and consultants, spend your money on the ground in, in making this situation as, as good as you can and follow staff's recommendations, which she has done. Unfortunately, the legal and consultant side of this thing has, has, has gone on despite that, but that's the way it is. The arena now is slightly larger than the one that was there when she bought the property. It's about the same length, a little bit, the one that's there now is slightly shorter, and it's, and it's, it's somewhat wider. But the way it has been constructed now and contained and the associated drainage systems by, by everybody's agreement is better than what it was before. And staff now tells us that, and I'm not sure why this came up when it did, but staff tells us they want to do an initial study. I don't know whether that's appropriate or not, we're just going to defer to staff. If they want a continuance, we're not objecting to it. We want to get this thing done, we want to get it done correctly and move on, as I'm sure, as I'm positive you do. So I'd like Paula to come up now and, and walk you through some photographs that explains this a little better. And, and then if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to try and answer them. And she'll be happy to answer any questions you have of hers as well.
Thank you. Good morning again.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate that you took the time to come and see the site. While the photographs and the maps are helpful, I think it, it was imperative to see the size and scope of what's been done. I want to absolutely thank John Kermitzos and the, and the staff, they've been wonderful to work with. And, and guided me from the beginning, that initial phone call when David Vianello called and said, you need a grading permit, and, and you do need a land use permit for your arena. And, and, and they carefully walked, walked me through those steps and assured me from the beginning that they would not require a civil engineer. While I had one visit the site, it was on first pass, twelve thousand dollars, just to hire that expert opinion. And, and since it wasn't a requirement, I put my hands in faith and trust into the staff, and they guided the cleanup. I've apologized many times and am very regretful that I made those improvements in two thousand and seven. I've been a property owner there for ten years in nineteen ninety-nine, and when I bought that property, there was a two hundred by seventy-foot arena. And when the Merabians bought the adjacent property, the second parcel that they own, that was one year prior to that, and the arena was present at the time, developed by the, the previous owner of my property, Mr. and Mrs. Mowen, in the early nineteen nineties. I thought that was important to establish that the arena was there when they, when they bought their adjacent land. I, I, um, probably the points I, I would like to just make a few small points, and then I'll take you through the photographs to substantiate sort of what happened when. The drainage water for the pond overflow has always come down that path and exited in the southwest corner. That natural ditch was crude, and it eroded my topsoil, and my fence posts were starting to be exposed, and that happened from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and seven. So for seven winters, I rode on that arena, and it served me well, but that ditch kept getting a little bit bigger and wider. I filled in the ditch, and I put sand all the way to the fence line. And I, and as Jeff Thomas noted, that there is some natural contours and sheet flow to that property the way it's designed. And I believed that what would happen, the water would sheet flow, and I would have, in, in time, that ditch would come back. But I thought, if I've lived there for seven years and rode on that surface, and it took seven years to get this big and wide, I would have more time before it would need to be addressed again, and it really was that simple. When the Merabians saw the, the grading and the sand taken all the way to the fence line, and that ditch filled in, they erected the retaining wall. And they left a ten-foot opening in the southwest corner for only the water, all the water for that pond overflow to exit through that corner. So the very first winter, albeit small, the water hit that retaining wall, grabbed all the sand in its path, and it migrated, as you saw, onto the Merabian property. I was very sorry that that happened. And, and then depended upon the staff to tell me how to remedy it and create a man-made swale or man-made ditch to accommodate that pond overflow so that the water and the siltation would have a place to, to move before it exited the property. So upon their advice, I pulled back the, the sand from the fence by twenty feet, and I contained it in railroad ties. So the sand is safely contained now, and that's my riding surface. And then we constructed a swale that is, it's banked on each side, and it has a trapezoidal flat bottom, and it's lined with filter fabric, and it's seeded with seventy pounds of, of perennial ryegrass, and it's well vegetated, and it worked extremely well this winter. All the, all that left exited my property in that corner was, was clear, clean water onto the Merabian's parcel. And that man-made swale is at least four times bigger than the natural drainage ditch that God created over the seven preceding years. I, it, there, there is some room for improvements, there needs to be some riprap in the corner so that when that water exits, that ten-foot opening, it has a chance to settle in large boulders before, which will, which will take care of the, the velocity issues, and of course, the erosion concerns that the Merabians have. I feel responsible for doing that, and I'm happy to do that. And I'm happy to follow Jeff Thomas's lead on any, any other improvements, small modifications that we need to make to that swale. I've, I've, am, am very willing to and want to work with County Bar, with the Santa Barbara County staff. The ponds, this is just not true, the ponds have never been manually drawn down, nor pumped out, nor maintained at fifty percent capacity during the rainy season. Mr. Mowen, when I bought that property, who was a previous owner, he stopped adding fresh water to the ponds before the rainy season, and he let, and he let them naturally evaporate to a foot or so below the boat dock. And he showed me on the pylons where his marker was, his visual marker was. It's right about here, and it was, it was a foot or two below, below the boat dock, but certainly not at fifty percent. The, they, he did not pump that water out. The only time that's ever happened, one time, I, I manually had to pump the water out. It ran down that natural drainage course, I had to lower the water level to, to repair the shoreline. The ducks migrate in, and they eroded the grass edge, and the liner was exposed, and I needed to lower the water level so I could go in and repair that. And it was, the ponds are an aesthetic water feature of that property. They were designed like that by Mr. Mowen, and they contribute to the attractiveness of the whole subdivision. To keep them at, during the rainy season, at fifty percent capacity would, it, it, it would be so unattractive, it just is not an option that I would, that I want to agree to. While I understand that it would be helpful to not add fresh water during the rainy season and let them naturally evaporate to the level that Mr. Mowen did, I'm in complete agreement of, of doing that as well. There's not a problem right now, that swale worked well this winter. The, the staff had it designed four times larger than the natural drainage ditch. I don't expect there to be a problem, the swale hasn't failed, the sand has not migrated, and no erosion has occurred. The appellate's attorney is asking that I, that I be responsible for any damage that occurs in the future. And my position is that, that retaining wall will, should that happen, that retaining wall will play a part in that. Because if that, if that swale, if that ditch filled up in the past, or if the swale fills up, then it would need to be able to move equally left and right, and the, and it will, the retaining wall will prohibit that from happening, and the water will only be able to exit in that ten-foot opening. So I'm suggesting, I feel certain that if, if there is damage in the future, that retaining wall will, will in, in some part be responsible for that. And the responsibility, if there, if there is damage, should be at, at least assessed at that time, as opposed to having me be responsible for something that has not occurred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I take you through the pictures quickly?
That'd be great.
Thank you. This is the, the advertisement that I had in two, in nineteen ninety-nine when I bought this property, and I thought this was important because three spaces from the bottom on the right, it shows that there was a seventy by two hundred foot riding ring there. Next, please. This is at the corner of baseline and Monarch, this, my parcel is a corner piece. I am standing right where the culvert, the eighteen-inch culvert leaves baseline and enters my property, and see that natural path, it, it spills into the upper pond in that light area between the two willow trees, that is a waterfall. It deposits into the larger pond, and then, and then moves south. Next, please. This was taken in about two thousand and four. And so this is before I made the two thousand and seven improvements, which ended up not being. And that is the arena, it was a little bit wider than Mr. Mowen's by twenty feet, but that's, that's the riding surface that I rode on for seven years before I made those improvements in two thousand and seven. Next, please. This is at the, the pond is behind me, and I'm looking at the, the modifications I made by taking that arena, the sand all the way to the fence, so I increased it by that visual size. Next, please. This is the, what the, the Merabians erected, the, it's actually, that's too short. It's, I think, three hundred and forty feet in length retaining wall, it's two feet high and eight feet wide. Next, please. Just a little bit of a close-up view, I also wanted to, on my side of the fence, which is on the left of the screen, there is a row of, it's a little bit shadowed, it's, it's another row of railroad ties that are, they're like four inches off of my fence line. And that's just the barrier, the dam that they've made certain that the water cannot move onto their parcel and can only exit in that ten-foot opening. Next, please. This shows the drainage course, this is after the first winter rain, where the water, I, I'm, I'm standing, the, the ponds are on my left, and I'm trying to show where that, where the natural drainage course is along that fence line, it's not as clear as I would like, and the washout that occurred. Next, please. Oh, forgive me, I wasn't reading my own subtitle. Oh, forgive me, I wasn't reading my own subtitle. That was the beginning of the retaining wall, um, in the last photo. I'm sorry. The north end of the retaining wall, that's what I was trying to capture. Forgive me. Next, please. This is the ten-foot opening, um, in the southwest corner of my property. Um, just where it's, you can see the light coming through, that's the amount of space that they left for the water to be released. Next, please. Okay, here's the pond overflow, um, of the large, the large pond. Um, the water goes across this little lazy river under that bridge and crosses a driveway and then moves sort of in a lazy S over to the, uh, right-hand side, which is my property line. Next, please. Okay, this is the, the arena washout that I, that occurred in one winter. The drainage ditch was always there, the man-made crude one. Um, and after one winter, with the water, um, hitting that retain, the retaining wall, that ditch was back. Um, so that also shows where the natural, where the water course is now and always has been, um, along that, that fence line. Next, please. Um, a little bit shadowed. This is the reduced and contained arena. Um, those dark bars are the, um, the railroad ties that, so the arena is safely contained within those railroad ties. Next, please. This is the, um, the man-made swale, you, on the right, right under the date, or right above the date. Um, it's the pond overflow where it enters the filter fabric. It starts, um, as a V, it's a V-shaped swale and it will take, it's, it's that gentle S and it takes you to the, up to the corner. Next, please. This is the, um, contained arena on the left and the size and the depth in the grass in the newly constructed arena. So those, this, that is straw wattle. It is still there. It was there, um, upon construction, um, in December, last December. And the grass is, that's seventy pounds of ryegrass. So the, the swale is, um, is, um, and that path to the left, which meets a railroad tie, it's, um, it's established and, um, fine, excuse me. Next, please. This, I'm standing inside, um, the trapezoidal swale from the north corner, looking down to the southwest corner where it exits. So if I, I'm standing in the swale and you can visually see that it is so much deeper than the arena that's up and contained up on the left. There is a straw wattle that, um, that, that's at the top of the swale on the left and then the fence line is the top of the swale on the right. Um, next, please. Still, I'm standing in the swale and you can barely see the corner of the contained, um, uh, sand arena. And, um, that, the tree, the eucalyptus tree is where the retention basin is and the, and so I'm approximately fifty feet from the corner. Next, please. This is, um, from the east, the, the arena wa, is on my right-hand side and the Morabians' developed parcel is on my left. And we're looking at their undeveloped parcel with a white ranch fencing, um, in the background. It, um, I'm showing that the grass is coming up and this, this is area was denuded and part of where the sand was pulled back and contained in railroad ties. So we put, um, the grass, it's coming up and, and it was to stabilize that earth so it would not, um, um, move into the swale. Next, please. Here's the retention basin. It has a filter fabric, um, that, on that low spot, um, which is next to the opening and the water, um, exits there and meets the water within this, the, coming from the swale and then exits onto the ten-foot opening. Um, this would be the area that needs the riprap added to it to address, um, the, the velocity issues and thereby, um, um, address the concerns of, of, of possible erosion in the future. Next, please. I took this so that you could see that the, that the ponds really are a water feature of the property and, and much more, um, so much more aesthetically than just holding ponds for overflow from the culvert. Next, please. This is what it looks like when the pond, um, is manually reduced and that's that shoreline that you're seeing. I needed to repair that. That's a pump. That, that hose is coming out and it's, it's crossing the drive right where that natural drainage ditch has always been. And that's what, um, it's very unattractive, um, when that water level is reduced like that. Um, next, please. And there's just a view, a visual view of what it looks like for the subdivision in, in, um, front baseline. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions. Before the appellate, uh, app, excuse me, appellate wants to rebut, I'm going to ask, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? I have no slip seeing then. Yes, please.
Susan Petrovich again for the appellate. And I will be very brief because I think that both sides have covered the, the problem. But I did feel that some misstatements were made by the applicant and I wanted to point them out to you. Again, let's, this is the corner of baseline and Monarch. This is where the water enters. And incidentally, the water for this, um, that enters the Merrill property doesn't just come through that, that culvert. It also comes from the north because the whole subdivision, um, is, is, the topography is from north to south. Uh, so the Merrill property is much, is lower than the properties to the north. Um, the reason why I put this back up again is that Mr. Kirby said and Ms. Merrill insinuated that all she did was, um, enlarge the arena. And that's not, as you can see, that's not what happened. Um, the flow line, the historic flow line, now here's the old arena, was right through the edge of the arena and right out that southwest corner. It did, the, the natural flow line was not this way. Um, and in fact, Ms. Merrill's fence along here is a solid fence. So when the ditch formed, that's pretty much what you're looking at here in this natural flow line. Even when Ms., this was when Mr. Moeen owned it. Now, before Mr. Moeen bought it, the Morabians, of course, had lived there for many years. This, according to them, they looked at buying this lot, but because it was so marshy most of the year, because the water would come down and kind of spread out, before Mr. Moeen put in the ponds and raised the elevation for his house pad to make this lot buildable, uh, the Morabians said they got no water, except in the, in the heaviest rainfall years. They didn't get water on either one of their lots from this property. It would just spread out across this property. Of course, all we have now is this topo after Ms., Mr. Moeen raised his house site. But this topo shows very clearly, even after he did that, his arena was at grade. So it, it was not causing any problem. The change occurred when, when Ms. Merrill filled in here. And that's why she got that horrendous scouring and erosion because if you fill in a drainage area where it used to spread out, it's got to go somewhere. And if it comes at any velocity, you know, it's going to carve its own path. So it, it pretty much replicated its old path, although it came right, it came along the fence line instead of replicating its historic path. So, um, I just wanted to, um, agree that the staff has been suggesting all along that the swale, um, be increased in size. And the reason why is that what you see on the ground does not match what the plans call for that Ms. Merrill had prepared by Mr. Baki. Uh, he called for a one-foot, ten-inch-deep, uh, swale that was trapezoidal in shape. This is not trapezoidal. Um, it was, it, he called for a, a swale that on one page is six feet, seven inches, or six feet, eight inches wide and seven, and the other page, it shows it as seven feet wide. It's not, it doesn't meet those specifications. It's much smaller than that. So, uh, we would concur, um, with the chair's suggestion that maybe this should be relooked at, uh, if it met, if it would at least meet the specifications that were shown on the plan. Um, and if adding rock certainly would solve our, our concern about the velocity. Uh, it is a maintenance headache, but so is fabric. So I guess there's no easy solution to this problem, uh, if we're going to use a swale. It would be nice to have a hydrologic report to rely on so that everybody could feel that the swale was adequate to carry the water since so many changes have been made to this property over time. We've asked that Ms. Merrill get that, but she has declined. Uh, so I guess the staff will have to continue to review this without adequate evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners? I have a quest, I have a, Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let the commission know that, um, Mr. Thomas is here. If you have any specific questions that you'd like to direct to.
Mr. Thomas is our grading inspector?
Technical staff, yes.
Yes. Yes, I do have some questions, Sophia.
Chairman Blough, commissioners?
Thank you. Uh, you also did plan checking for the grading plans, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
So you're the one that would approve the plan that anybody would draw? Have I got that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess this is my, I mean, to me, this is not that complex. Um, I think you could come up with the requirements for this grading to be correct. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. This is maybe a question for everybody on the staff. Uh, I do not see the reason for spending ten to fifteen staff hours and costing the applicant four to five thousand dollars when we're, the expert's standing before us. He's the one that's going to approve what any, whatever anybody would design. And if he says the design solution or the solution is, is that simple, let him give instructions to the applicant on how to correct the problem and be done with it. I mean, I, I don't get it. I don't, I don't know why we're here today. And we could do all the study, we could do all this and nice stuff, but I think it's nothing more but a waste of money. I'd rather see the applicant spend the four, five thousand dollars on the rock or whatever solution staff is going to have rather than wasting everybody's time and wasting everybody's money. I'm looking for an answer here.
I can go over a few of the points that were raised if the, um, commission pleases that maybe would, uh, address some of the issues that may be of concern.
I think that'd be great.
Okay. Um, I worked with flood control recently to, um, do a, um, generic hydrology study through the area. And, um, the limiting factor for this site is the eighteen-inch culvert that goes under baseline and enters the property. For a hundred-year event, that culvert is only going to be able to withstand approximately twenty-five cubic feet per second of flow rate. And that trapezoidal, um, swale that currently is on the property, although it does not, it is not the size of the plan that was submitted. It's approximately three feet wide at the base, one-to-one sides, approximately six feet across at the top and a, an average depth of about a foot and a half. At that size, flood control tells me that that swale will handle a capacity of twenty-six cubic feet per second of flow for a hundred-year event. Now, the county's design standard is only twenty-five-year event, which at that rate, that trapezoidal, um, channel would be under a flow rate of approximately nineteen cubic feet per second. So even in its current size, although it doesn't match the plan, is definitely far sufficient than what would be required by the county. Also on that, um, realistically, that swale would only have to be returned back to grade. There wouldn't even have to be an incised channel there because of the, if it was returned the way it was historically, then the property owner wouldn't have to be, you know, putting in this channel. Uh, they're going above and beyond what really would be required by the county to, uh, deal with. They would only have to be returning it back to the historical sheet flow. Um, so that's why the county didn't require an engineer because the situation on the site was to return it back to its historic nature.
And what you're saying is that they're, they're not doing that, they're doing something that's even better than what was in terms of history?
Correct.
Okay, continue, yeah.
Um, the retaining wall, whether the flow line meandered back and forth between the properties is really here and or there. The retaining wall that was in place definitely restricts that natural meandering of any flow channel that happens. Both properties come together approximately a two to five percent slope, um, from, um, on the, um, Morabians' property, it drainage travels from north to southeast and then on the, um, on Sacramento property, travels from the north to the west, south. And so, um, there's just a natural low depression in there and any creek or drainage channel moves over time depending on flow rates, it finds the least path of travel. So.
So, and by doing what we're doing now, we're not going to have that situation occur. We're going to contain it all so there'll be no further erosion. And so it's going to stop the dirt and the silt from getting into the.
It will increase the velocity of what the natural drainage was, but unfortunately, the retaining wall there has, is a limiting factor. And so this property owner is trying to do what's, they can do to minimize the effects of not only their own property, now with the potential of increased velocities because that retaining wall is there, but as well as to address the issue of slowing the water down, maintaining it in a non-erosive fashion. Um, they haven't done anything in this property that increases the volume of water that would be leaving their site with this development, this enlarged arena.
That's my other question was, I mean, the enlarged arena is just simply more sand. It doesn't concentrate the flow, it doesn't add to it. Am I correct?
Correct. And as, as, um, Mr. Flowers said, noted on the previous owners', um, uh, Ariel, when they built the arena, that the existing flow channel had been, you know, altered around that new arena slightly and traveled down the, the approximate fence line location. Um, due to the po, topography of the properties, um, any flow coming out of those ponds, um, couldn't be returned to a, a sheet flow that would have run across the arena because of the grade of the property. You know, it, it wants to run perpendicular to the contour line. So as it's flowing, it's going to be flowing downhill towards the lowest point. So it, it can't just run across the arena and then go down because the natural grade of the topography tips the other direction. Um, I think that pretty much covers everything that I'd made notes on. Do you guys have any further questions?
I see no lights, no, I think we're done. So I'll ask my question again for Ms. Black and, uh, again, it loses me on the issue of, uh, any kind of environmental review. All we're do, I mean, flood control and the grading department are the two people that are going to dictate how a situation is going to be con, conditioned. If the two of them are in agreement and the applicant's agreeing to make those modifications, I, I, I'm done unless I could point something out to me.
Mr. Chair, the reason that we're, um, struggling with the SEQA issue is because this item is on appeal to your commission. And if it were, um, a permit that we were reviewing at the staff level, we wouldn't be in the same position. So, um.
I guess what I'm saying for me, I've heard no evidence here today that would give me any reason to have them spend three to five thousand dollars or whatever it costs to go out and do an environmental document when the gentleman before us, and I know his counterparts in flood control, are going to dictate what's going to happen at the conclusion. Commissioner Brown.
So what you're saying, Ms. Black, is, is if the appellant withdraws their appeal, then you don't need to do an initial study?
Well, I would take, I would.
I, I don't, I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, Ms. Black hasn't said that, but I take that from what he says and from what you say. Is that what?
Uh, uh, this is a de novo issue, right?
Right.
So, so we can, we can deny the appeal and condition, and create a condition. Am I correct? Just to simply get flood control and the county grading department's approval as to the remediation.
Mr. Chair, I would not recommend that your commission approve a project subject to such a vague condition. If, if you choose to approve this project, deny the appeal and approve the project, I would suggest that you continue it and have a plan in front of you that you, so that you know and the appellant's know what you're actually approving. And if, um, what the commission is saying is that you don't believe a SEQA, um, document is required, then I would ask you to tell me which SEQA exemption you would like us to use. then I would ask you to tell me which SEQA exemption you would like us to use. So, but, but I would not suggest just leaving it to the discretion of staff. I think it should come back to your Commission.
I'll just make one comment. We could do that, but I don't see the need for it. It's very common that we would approve a track map, we would approve a tended track map, we would approve a parcel map, and we would say that the grading plan has to be approved by Public Works and by flood control.
Mr. Chair, I think the difference today is we did that and we're on appeal. So, if you simply say, "Well, we just want you to come up with a plan that staff believes will work."
So, the grading plan-
You're going to see an appeal to the board.
The grading plan has already been approved?
No, it has not. There are some corrections that do need to be done to the plan.
Nonetheless, if you, if you approve it today, I can pretty much guarantee you this will be appealed to the board. So, my recommendation again is that you direct it back to staff, tell us which SEQA exemption you'd like us to use, and we will work out the details on the-
I think Ms. Petrovich is maybe going to save our day here, I would hope. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, when I was sitting down with the staff talking about this, we were mulling over this whole problem about the SEQA exemption. And also, what project? What is the project? Because the plans don't match what's on the ground. And we, I would, I had suggested these conditions, thinking that if, with these conditions, at least the, the conditions that I listed in my presentation, which would have to be on the revised land use permit, again, you don't even have a revised land use permit. You don't have a project. That's the whole problem. So, we're not hung up on the environmental issue. We're hung up on the fact, and I said it in my letter, what is this project? What are you being asked to approve? Are you being asked to approve what's on the plans? Are you being asked to approve what's on the plans plus some conditions? Or are you being asked to approve what's on the ground with or without conditions? I don't know, and I don't think you do either. I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe we could continue this, give us a chance to look at the land use permit wording, the plans, and try to get some consensus between the parties, the county and the two property owners, at least as to what, as I say, is still not an ideal situation, but it's, it's better than continuing this battle and taking your time and more staff time on an environmental review.
Ms. Petrovich, are you not-
That's my suggestion.
Are you not comfortable with the flood control department and the county grading department approving a plan?
Not without knowing what it is. What are they approving? We, we had to go hire engineers to look at this. And as, as I mentioned in my presentation, you've got flood flow coming across from the north, not just through this, this swale. So, even though flood control and Mr. Thomas may have calculated the size of that pipe, you've also got surface flow coming from the north that comes across Monarch and onto this property. But nonetheless, without knowing what the plan is and just saying, "Oh, well, let's just leave it to flood control and the grading department," as, as Ms. Meister said, this is how we got here, and it's still not satisfactory. If you saw the pictures that Ms. Merrill showed, the bank, embankment for her arena is way up high, and so here's the Marabian side, here's her side. If the swale breaks, where's that water going to go? It's going to erode both properties. So, we just need some change, we need some additional changes.
Thank you.
So, that's my suggestion, is you continue it and give us a chance to not require environmental review.
How much long do you think it would take? How much of a continuance would you suggest?
A month, I'd say.
Month?
I would think. Steve, what do you think?
Mr. Chair, Steve Kirby. You know, if, we just want to move this thing along. And if it's, if it's best to get a revised plan before you, that's acceptable to my client. But I, I want there to be no mistake, we're going to follow recommendations made by county staff, who we believe are fully capable of helping us design this project properly. And so, negotiations may or may not, there may not be a meeting of the minds between the parties. I just want to tell you that now. I don't know, we'll try, but we're going to follow staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
I think Commissioner Brooks had her light-
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brooks. Oh, you know what? I can't tell what's light.
Okay.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you.
I have mine.
You know, this, this project started because there was a problem with the water. And the applicant filed for a land use permit to correct the problem. In the process, the appellant felt that maybe not all the proper things were being done. And there's been a touch and go on this project continually. But if, as we're getting involved, the staff has made some good recommendations and the applicant has done, made, applied those applications. Before we make this Hatfield McCoy project with the staff getting, the council getting involved in, they seem to be getting ready to solve this. And before an EIR and all the documentation is requested, we should grant them an extension and let them solve it. They're on the, they're on the, on the verge of solving this thing now. When I went on the site visit, I was impressed by the small culvert. It was a channelization of the water, but apparently it still has a small impact, but not as large as it did before. Before, it would sheet over on the other property continually. Now, there's a chance to do something with that water. I, I would suggest that before we get them into being against each other with an EIR and spending all this money, we let them try to solve it for 30, 45 days, and I'm sure that they will come to a good solution. The applicant wants to solve the problem, and the appellant certainly wants the problem solved. So, I think 45 days would be an adequate time to let them solve it with the county staff. Our county planner seems to understand exactly what needs to be done, and he wants to tell them, and she's, she's ready to do that. So, an extension would be, I know it's your district, Commissioner Brooks, but that's would be my recommendation to you.
Commissioner Brown?
A question for Ms. Black. If this item goes back to the applicant and appellant to work out, is there not still a problem with what SEQA exemption to use?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's why I asked for direction from the Commission as to which exemption you would want us to use. We analyzed it and came up with two potential exemptions. Neither one seems to fit perfectly, but we'll follow the lead of the Commission and make one work.
And, and would, but would, so, an initial stu-, how does an initial study help you further finding an SEQA exemption?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, it doesn't. It basically is an acknowledgement that the project isn't exempt from SEQA, and so some other documentation is required. But, you know, if the parties agree that the real issue is the substance of the solution, we can make it work.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I will say that even though I have much greater faith in flood control and staff than maybe the appellant does, I could certainly understand them wanting to see a final plan before they were, were to agree to withdraw their appeal. So, based on that, it'd be my suggestion that we do continuous for 30 days. Obviously, if you don't get it done in 30 days, you could notify the staff that you want it continued for another two weeks or whatever you think you need. But to me, this is just not that complex a problem, even by the appellant's own engineer and the couple of suggestions I made and the questions I made, it's like, yeah, it's kind of a no-brainer. So, let's not belabor this. I'm going to go ahead and suggest that Commissioner Brooks, you make it a-
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Brooks, because it's her district.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks, I'd like to hear from you, that's what I was saying, yes.
Okay, good. I would like to hear from County Council on this. I see some questions, nodding of head, and perhaps you could clarify what has already been said by Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, here's what I'll start with. First of all, we, it is a project that's subject to SEQA. So, when we have a project under SEQA, we look to see whether it's exempt by statute or, or one of the exemptions, the categorical exemptions. So, as the decision-maker on this project, your Commission has the discretion to determine whether or not one of those exemptions applies. And staff has given the recommendation on the exemption, exemptions and their application, but as the decision-maker, you have the discretion to determine whether or not one of those exemptions is appropriate. And if it, if you determine an exemption is not appropriate, then the next step is an initial study.
And then, how long then? Would this 30-day extension achieve this?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, if your Commission were to direct us to come back in 30 days with a solution based upon staff's input, that would not provide for any sort of an initial study. That's on the assumption that we will find an SEQA exemption that works.
Did you understand? What she's saying is, is that if we determine the exemption applies, we're done. That's, that's our job to do that. And we can, we could also say that the exemption doesn't apply. Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, that's correct. And I would just add that as with every decision that you make, SEQA or on project approval, you need to have substantial evidence to support your decision going forward.
And that's what you would do in the next 30 days if it comes back? Am I correct? Okay. Mr. Kirby, do you have anything more to add?
Just a request that the next hearing be as soon as possible, but after July 20.
That's, we have to ask August 12.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights and no, no further speakerships, I'll close this to public hearing and come back to the Commission for deliberation. Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, thank you, Chair Blau. I guess, I, my motion would be then for the 30-day extension. I think initially, when I heard the idea of the initial study, there are, you know, many, I don't have that many questions. You know, I went to the property, I saw some of the improvements have been made. The one thing that I did note in the letter that I read, the most recent letter from Ms. Petrovich, you know, this idea of what exactly is the plan? I mean, so many improvements has, have been made. I'm thinking, as we heard from Mr. Thomas, you know, that, you know, the conditions are more than sufficient right now. We don't know, you know, we, you don't want to wait for a, you know, 25-year rain or 100-year incident to prove that. But, you know, I felt in my site visit, what I saw, you know, would adequately, if not more than adequately, prevent an incident from another flooding or runoff onto the property. I have a, I don't know, I have, I have great concerns about the retaining wall and, you know, how that can be, if that's going to be further studied. You know, if we did the initial study, you know, are they going to look at all, all sides? But it looks like that wouldn't be done. So, I will hear from my fellow Commissioners and we'll make the motion, you know, at that point to, to extend if the initial study is not the way to go.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I, I think the documentation needs to catch up. I think they'll solve this problem, and I'm ready to move on for a continuance.
I'm the same. I would suggest that you make your motion for the continuance to be August 20th, 12th? All right, well, if we did 30 days, it would actually be July 15.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Kirby requested that it be the next hearing available after the 20th. And that is really the next available hearing after the 20th.
And that, and so that one's scheduled for Santa Maria?
That is scheduled for Santa Maria. Which I assume is probably okay.
Shorter drive. Making the motion?
Okay, yes, I'm ready to make the motion. Chair Blau, I'll move that this item be continued until the meeting on August 12 in Santa Maria.
Second. Seeing no further lights, Ms. Oplin.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries four zero.
Great, we'll take a five-minute break for our next item.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, that's John.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to, on the record, apologize to Mr. Flowers and your Commission for not providing that PowerPoint. It was forwarded to me, and I did say I would make that available, but, so I just wanted to make that statement. And thanks again for allowing me to extend remotely.
Great, I appreciate that. As I understand it, too, this idea of the continuance came as of yesterday, I believe, so I can understand how there could be a little confusion getting that up to us. Appreciate that. Ms. Oplin, will you read the next item under the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Jennifer Foster, agent for the owner, John Salentine, to consider case number 07RMM1, application filed on January 8, 2007, and to approve the addendum to negative declaration 87-ND-15 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. And I'll ask my Commissioners for ex parte on site visits. Commissioner Brown?
I made a site visit on Monday, and I spoke briefly with Ms. Foster.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I also made a site visit on Monday, and I spoke to Ms. Foster.
Commissioner Valencia?
And I also made a site visit, thank you.
Thank you. I'll brief the staff presentation. Erin, right?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, good morning. Today, I would like to present to you the Salentine Second Development Envelope Project. The project site is located in an existing developed rural neighborhood within the Galleta Community Plan boundaries at 1225 Franklin Ranch Road. The site is located within the inland area, is approximately five acres in size, and is zoned residential ranchette five. This is a close-up aerial view of the property, so you can gain a little context. Franklin Ranch Road follows the creek, Franklin Creek, up to the property here. The road enters the property here. You've all been to the site, so you may be somewhat familiar with this. Throughout the staff report, I refer to the site as a crescent-shaped bowl. And what I mean by that is that these slopes are higher in elevation than the center of the site. So, this slope forms kind of a crescent shape here and directs, collects runoff and directs it out the site down to the east and out to the site here. So, I wanted to, the slopes on this property are very important, so I wanted to just kind of get a basic understanding of how the slopes work. So, everything is funneled this way to the east. The project is a request for recorded map modification to add a second development envelope and to modify a previous condition of approval which prohibited grading activities during the winter months. The property was split back in 1987, the James Lot Split. It was an existing 10-acre parcel, and the lot split created two 5-acre parcels, this being one of them. That lot split created the existing development envelope here in the northwest corner, which is kind of up on the slope there. And today, Mr. Salentine is seeking approval for a new envelope, kind of in the center of the site here in a, in a flat portion. The topography of the parcel has been altered by the placement of approximately 20,000 cubic yards of fill material in the center of the crescent-shaped bowl by the Santa Barbara County Flood Control District in 1995. The fill material effectively leveled a portion of the drainage and created a flat pad of approximately 22,000 square feet in size. And you can see the topography of the parcel and the flat area here created by that fill material. The proposed development envelope would be located wholly within the flat area. And in the addendum to the negative declaration, I describe the second development envelope as not visible from public areas. Because of the slopes that surround the property, there are no public views into this area. So, visibility of any future structure here is, is not a concern from a public standpoint, although it is visible from a handful of private properties in the area. The property is constrained by two water lines. Number one is the Combe Water Line, which is the Kachuma Operations Management Board Water Line. This is a 48-inch water line, four feet, that supplies the south coast with much of their potable water. So, this is an extremely important water line. And then, secondly, we have a Galleta Water- And then, secondly, we have a Goleta Water District Water Line that is located directly adjacent to the Combe Line. So it was very important to consider both of these easements and these water lines when designing the location of the proposed envelope.
Before you go on, I'm seeing a little dotted line on here right there. Is that the extent of the easement?
Correct.
And just, is there a prohibition against building in that easement?
No. In fact, this, this plan was reviewed and approved by the Combe Operations Supervisor, and I do have a letter from him in the file. And basically, what that bottom line is that you pointed out is a setback line.
That's why, that's why, that's why I just asked.
Yeah.
You answered incorrectly. Yes, so there is, you can't build within this area right in here, am I correct? It's a setback for buildings?
I believe you can. That's the reason why we drew the development envelope where it is. The actual water line is underneath the black lines and then the setback is an area that Combe likes to protect. And in certain cases like this, they've allowed Mr. Salentine to draw his building envelope in that area. And maybe the applicant can clarify this a bit when they come up to the microphone.
Great, thank you. Mr. Brown has a question.
Yeah, well, we're on that same topic. The, the Combe Line and the Goleta Water District Line are with, contained, I'm not quite sure, within the two black lines?
Correct.
So there's three, I see three black lines.
The black lines are the easement lines and the water lines are within the easements.
Okay. Do you happen to have a copy of the letter from Combe that we could see?
Yes.
Okay. Because you didn't provide it to us in the staff report and I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Continue.
Environmental review of the project was handled by an addendum to the previously approved negative declaration 87ND15, which analyzed potential impacts from the James Lot Split, which created the subject parcel. For all environmental issue areas, there are no substantial changes in the severity of impacts. No new significant environmental effects, other than those analyzed in 87ND15, have been found with respect to the creation of the proposed new building envelope. And just as a matter of clarification, there's two things I'd like to clarify. Number one, in the staff report, it states that the project has been complete since 2007, so we've been complete on this project for almost two years. And to briefly explain that, there were two issues which really are driving this two-year completion. Number one, initially, the applicant was seeking to request extended work hours. He works during the week and he has access to his own heavy equipment and he was seeking to work on the weekends. And so as part of that request, we asked the applicant to develop a noise study that would analyze the noise generated by that equipment on the weekends. And he did go through with the study, it was peer-reviewed. And then, before we came to hearing, he chose to pull that request out of the project. So we spent probably six to nine months working on the noise study. And then, a second issue was that just above these water lines here, or maybe, maybe even within them, in approximately this area here, there was a, there was a minor slide in this slope. And at the request of Combe, the applicant repaired that slope and the engineering, in order to work that up, took some time. So the applicant's engineering and our review of that engineering was the second issue, which caused us to be complete for quite a while there. And then, secondly, I just wanted to revise condition number 24 quickly. Underlined here, you see recorded map modification in the staff report. That actually says coastal development permit. That was my mistake, so we just want to clear that up. As conditioned, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Goleta Community Plan, the Chapter 21 subdivision regulations, and the county land use development code. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the required findings for the project, including the sequoia findings, approve the addendum, and adopt the mitigation monitoring plan contained in the condition of approval, and finally, approve the project subject to the conditions included in attachment B. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of the commissioners? Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Briggs, the question comes up for me of this ND that was done in 1987 where there have been some changes to the site. And I'm just wondering, does that really affect the information that has, well, since there have been changes, and you've indicated that it doesn't really affect the changes or the conclusions of the ND, yet does the addition of all that fill material, does it make any difference for any of the geology or hydrology portions of the ND? Seems to me that it would, that's why I'm asking the question.
The, the fill material obviously does affect the property. I believe it's unconsolidated at this point and it absolutely affects the way the property drains. But to my knowledge, and I have been working very closely with the grading inspector, the fill material hasn't caused any substantial issues as far as that's concerned. There have been a number of drainage-related issues on the property, but they're all mostly centered on the crescent-shaped slopes, not on the flat pad in the center of the site. And the fill material that was placed there in 1995 was done by the county flood control department and supervised by the county grading department. And the grading inspector is extreme, very extremely familiar with this site. He's been out there continuously for the last five years.
Okay.
And so, the county grading department has been on top of this.
Okay. And the other question that I have from that is that septic. I'm not sure how the septic or where the septic is going to go in relation to where all the fill has occurred and whether or not that, that makes any difference because the ND didn't look at that. But also, the ND did talk about most, the soils have high erosion hazard and severe constraints for septic systems. So did the fill affect any of the seismic hazards that might have?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, not to my knowledge, I'm not familiar with the seismic hazards, but to answer your question about the septic system, I do have a letter here from Paul Jensen of Environmental Health Services in the file, and I can add this into the record as well. And let me just read you what Mr. Jensen's letter says quickly. "The applicant has provided to Environmental Health Services drywell performance tests completed by Pacific Materials Laboratory that indicate an onsite wastewater treatment system could be constructed to serve a one or two-bedroom house. Therefore, EHS has no recommended conditions of approval." So in other words, Mr. Salentine has conducted drywell performance tests that are satisfactory to EHS.
And what about the issue about the, the erosion hazard with all the fill material? Does that, because it's not been compacted, I'm not really familiar with fill material, it's not the natural material of, of the land or what it's composed of, so it's stuff that's been brought in and it's a different quality? Does that, has, does that not make any difference?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I don't feel qualified to answer that directly.
Well, would it not, would not that be an important consider, let me say if we were just starting fresh today and we're doing an ND for the, for the development envelope here, would that be a consideration?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, what I can tell you in response to your question is this request did go to the subdivision development review committee. Sitting on that committee are the grading inspector for the planning and development department, flood control, so the agencies that would be involved in reviewing this to determine suitability were on that and they expressed no concerns. That isn't to say that additional compaction won't be, I think additional compaction will be required as the development envelope is actually developed, but I don't think it's a particular concern.
Let me pipe in a little bit. What will happen is, is that prior to any building being constructed, they'll probably be required to have a soils test done?
Yes.
And it depends on what the soils test does as to whether or not you're going to have to do additional compaction or not. If they compacted it to, say, 92 or 93 or 4%, and it's a certain kind of foundation, certain kind of soil, nothing would be required. If it's a certain kind of soil, it could be required to be recompacted to 95%, but you won't know until the soils report's done.
Okay.
But it's prior to a building, it's not at this point.
No, no, I understand that, but I was just concerned in relationship to the ND in terms of what it looked at. Okay, thank you.
I don't think it, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I don't think it creates a concern at this point.
Seeing no further questions, does the applicant have a presentation?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Foster. I'm the land use agent for the owners, John and Elizabeth Salentine. And I don't have a formal presentation today. I just wanted to first thank Aaron for his thorough job on the staff report and the conditions. And we feel that he's addressed everything sufficiently and we don't have any clarifications or comments necessarily. We are here to, you know, answer questions, of course, and I have John Salentine here, the owner, and Mike Simmons, our engineer. And I did want to just clarify some things that have been brought up so far. If you could put that, the, yeah, that would be great. I wanted to clarify that Combe easement, the portion that's in the envelope where the dotted line is, that's the edge of a Combe access easement. And Combe has communicated to us that they don't necessarily need to get into that easement to access their line. So they're fine with that envelope encompassing a portion of that easement. And the only thing they've told us is that if we wanted to build in that portion of the envelope, they would like us to talk to them about it first. We don't necessarily have any plans to put anything in that portion of the envelope. But it's, it's just an old access easement and they were clear with us that they wouldn't even use that portion of the easement to access their line anyway. They, there's another way around that where they can get into their line. We have had geologic reports done on the fill because we did need to establish whether or not this area was a solid, stable, buildable area. And the report's conclusion was that it's sufficient how it is now and when structures are proposed to be built, there would be mitigation required such as compaction and/or grade beams. I won't address anything else at this point, but the owner may want to clarify some things as well. Did you want to talk now, John? Okay.
The reason I raise the question is, I don't know how this water line is built, what kind of water line it is, but it's unusual for me to have a building envelope that's that close to it. And the problem is, is if the water line breaks, it's a hole the size of which you can't imagine if it's a 48-inch pipe. And typically, water companies want, you know, 25, 50-foot setback from that water line because they feel like, yeah, we'll repair the water line, repair your dirt, but they don't want to have to put your house back on if it falls into the big hole.
Right. And like I said, we have been working with Combe all along the way. We have a very open line of communication with them and they wrote that letter approving the location of this envelope. And Mr. Salentine's going to address that a little bit more.
Great, thank you. Mr. Salentine.
Hi, I'm John Salentine, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. This is not shown exactly correct. The, the Combe easement is 80-foot wide and the Combe line is basically in the center of that. It's not down on the edge of the envelope.
It's not here, it's up in here someplace, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that would make more sense to me.
And the Goleta water easement is on the southern side of it, within that Combe 80-foot easement.
So you're still going to be 40 feet away from the water line if anything you build?
Yes.
That makes more sense. Okay, great.
And we've worked closely with Combe whenever we've done anything as far as having their people on site, when we've done some other work, having them on site if we're working in that easement.
Mr. Brown.
I appreciate that, that you have been working with Combe, but I guess my question is, for the next property owner, because there's probably going to be a, you're going to build a dwelling here or you're going to place a dwelling here, and would future property owners be aware that there's easements there and the restrictions if they were to buy the property and they would understand that there's?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the map that established this parcel and any action that we take today to add a new envelope would be in their title report. So this information would definitely be in there. On top of that, as part of the work we do at planning and development, we have property printouts. And those printouts identify the Combe water line on this property. So any planner that processes a project on this property in the future will be aware that there is a water line there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have four speaker slips. The first one is Andrew, I think it's Andrew Brown.
I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Can I have use of the clicker or no? So, I'd rather have the, just the, I'm not very computer literate here, so bear with me. Okay, and to use the pointer, just the, okay. I'm Andy, Andy Brown. Paraphrase Will Rogers, I've never met a person I didn't like. John was that way, too. He's a nice guy. I like him. I like his family. I have machine envy. I like his bulldozer and his backhoe. I'm envious of that. Relationship started off fine. I gave him maps, I gave him contractors' names, invited him over to my house. He had some concern about drainage, we had some concern about septic, we had concern about grading. Is that what I said, everything? Grading, septic. So that's issues, septic, drainage, grading, mudslides. Some of the stuff has been corrected and he's done a lot of work. He's a hard-working guy. You got to like him. You know, you admire. He's American dream, he's got his own corporation. He's got, he's good. You know, you like him. History, '95, permit was granted for 20,000 cubic yards of fill issued to Jeff James on two parcels, which we just discussed. April 7th, we found that actually 200,000 yards had been brought in by mistake, 18,000 extra truckloads. Caused some damage to our property. I didn't want to sue the neighbor. We went ahead and we're fixing the other half of the property. Part of it was on, the part of James retained, we forgot that about fixing. Now, it costs us a lot of money, but we've done it. Didn't ask him for any money. He's a friend, he's a neighbor. I wouldn't, it's not right, you know, but we put a lot of work into fixing it, the other side. The present side is, now, Salentine comes along, he's interested in the property. The fill has exceeded its scope across the property line, not compacted. This is, I talked to Jeff about it. He said he would comply before he, before he sold it or anything. That didn't quite happen. He also told Wydell uphill that he'd repair a major slide damaging Wydell's property. That didn't happen either. Salentine buys a parcel, it was a secret escrow, rapid escrow, sealed documents. Okay, I let that go. Terms, no principal payments, return of money if you desire. Salentine states it's previous owner's responsibility to fix the grading issues. I should have brought it up when it happened. Salentine's contractor from RCD approaches me, says he wants to direct water onto my property, it's going to be harmful to my property. I talked to him, the guy's gone, no conversation ensues. Finally, after we discussed with grading and we discussed with him, he agrees to make it comply, moved it back onto his property, did some compaction on the front bench. Permit called for zero import, ended up importing 1,500 extra cubic yards. And I'm told by grading, that's normal, it compacts down, it's all very loose, it packs down. So that's, okay, understand that, but that's 150 trucks coming up a narrow easement road. It does make an impact. It's done, that's okay. I'm okay with that. It brings another 150, after the fill is completed. Does much of the work on weekends. Some of his stuff has backup bells, noisy. Places fill without compacting it or benching it on the hillside. I have picture, everything I put here, I've got pictures, I've got documentation on if you want to see them. Installs 10 drywells for septic, most failed, the rest daylight on my property because the actual, the leach lines had failed. Okay. Moving along, I asked to look at plans, that was denied. Called environmental health to come out and do the test. They asked them to do the test, first was a dye test. And please bear with me, it's got a little history here, it shows, but daylight it with, it basically daylight, daylight it, but there was no dye. Everyone witnessed this. It was wet on my property, again. Discovered, I went and researched, it's scientific evidence saying there's minimal efficacy of this kind of study in this situation. PML was there, Ron Pike said he had no knowledge of it. The only guy with the knowledge of it was Don Smith, the backhoe operator, okay, of how to do the test. It was being done wrong and it was done, so I called, actually, profited, he didn't want the information. I contacted Paul Jensen, he came down, he looked at it. He said, it wouldn't, it's not the proper task, would be daylighting. It's a tough, tough site to build on, it's bad soil. Again, I'm not opposed to building there, I just want, I don't want, I don't want the septic, I don't want the leach, whatever it is, on my property. That's what I, that's my concern. I like them, I just don't want a septic. Although Salentine is able to control the speed of his, people on a narrow road, apparently unable to control his worker's speed. I constructed a speed hump, very similar to UCSB, you can cross it at 15, but not at 30. Parked test is agreed upon, continues all structural grading, complete prior to test. Test commences during a drought, daylighting again appears. Witnessed by two geologists and PML. Test is truncated upon occurrence of two events. Someone has worker backs into my parked truck while dozing my speed hump without my permission. Okay? He initially Okay, he initially denies telling to do so, later when the sheriff was called in, he says, "Just a misunderstanding, sorry." I'm out three grand. Actually didn't say sorry, just said it was a misunderstanding, apology would have helped. Campbell, my mistake at that point, shows me, second thing, shows me plans that call for compaction of the remainder of the pad. This becomes very important later. It's a structural part, which is probably a violation of our agreement. I re-asked, he refused to discuss, he said plans weren't final. But my point is, if they're not final, we don't know what that septic system, cause it's built right adjacent to the fill site. Campbell, Ron Pike, Simmons cannot tell me, one way, geologists, soils engineers, they said compacted soil, well, that does absorb much less than uncompacted soil. This is gonna affect the drywell perk test, that's my concern. I make queries to EHS, Salentine, I haven't heard either, from either of them, well, I can't say that. I did speak with Environmental Health, I got a return call from Environmental Health yesterday, actually. Talked to, um, uh, Paul Jensen, he called me. Ninety-eight, well ninety-seven, I didn't have it in here, there's a permit issued to do the drainage system, drainage system was done. We had a mild rain, we had two drought years here, let's keep that in mind, we had two drought years, mild rain causes drainage system to fail. Grading inspector witnessed, I've got photos which we'll see in a little while. There's two slide areas, one comes onto my property, one affects Salentine's property and Wydell property. This is all documented quite well. Topos asked Salentine to help clean up, I get an attorney from PP&amp;P, threatens legal action if I don't move my fence four inches and cut down a hedge on the property line. Funny that his eucalyptus trees on his property aren't aesthetically pleasing, mine has to be removed. Tensions are building. Cause the curved shape probably acts like a megaphone, it's, it's loud, I can hear him use a porta potty. You know, diesel engines are, they, they're loud, it's dusty. Trucks caused, we had to back up about eighth of a mile, narrow easement road occasionally. Cause the trucks, they got a line of trucks coming in. Last several weeks preceding the hearing, everyone's been very, very polite, I, I should have known a hearing was coming, but... Enough said, perk test failed initially, dry wells required, standing water at twenty-two feet when they drilled the holes initially. Ten foot separation required from water, five foot hole down, first four wells, three gallons an hour pumping out, went underground, two hundred fifty feet pumped out of my, I have a, um, line down there and I was getting three gallons an hour out of it. Now, by the time Environmental Health came up and we got the other tests going, we're testing further holes further up. I'll demonstrate some of this stuff. Now, if you can see this, uh, some facts here, the first, the percolation test, it requires dry wells because it's a very unstable area. Clay, most of this area here is clay. Doesn't absorb much, that's why it's a poor area for septic. The dry wells are built something like a five, I believe five foot in diameter, I haven't been allowed to see the plans yet, haven't been able to see them. Paul Jensen, he didn't have them, he thought he'd turn them over to the county, I'm not aware of them being here. Interested to see which wells they tested, cause there's a series of them. Now, the fill, this is the, was uncompacted imported fill here, okay? Non-clay. They started doing the testing when this fill was not compacted, this, this portion beside the dry wells. So my concern is that if it's not, it's not going in here anymore, where is it gonna go? This is kinda, excuse my, again, my diagrams are not very scientific in nature, they're hand drawn and I apologize for that. I am, I spent thirty years in the Marine Corps, I believe in people's property rights, but I don't know how to draw, okay? Any five foot hole down, you know, ten foot above water. This dry well, this is my, this is his bench, bank going down to this, the property line, this is my property here. And down here, there's a catch basin, which catches water and puts it right into Franklin Creek. It was daylight, for these four holes here, this one I believe was a, a test hole, which they just did to see how deep they'd have to go. They hit water at twenty-two feet, I believe, I might be off a little bit, I'm just going off what was said. I'm interested in seeing what the actual report says. The next four of them failed because they daylighted profuse amounts of water all through this area, which actually ended up going into the drain line and then eventually goes to Franklin Ranch Creek. Another point, Franklin Ranch Road does not come up to our property, it's a driveway that comes, Franklin Ranch Road stops about eighth of a mile before the private driveway. And the GW, uh, Gleta Water and, um, Combs were transposed on your map. They're, the Gleta Water is further south than Combs. That's a one foot line that comes across there. Interested to see what their letter says. Okay, he failed, these ones, these failed miserably. This next group, these two, five and six, didn't get enough volume. So they drilled a very shallow one, this one I believe is five foot, which normally wouldn't be allowed, but just as overflow for that one is allowed. Now granted, they test this at such a level, it's a greater capacity than actually, it has to be tested. I've gotten very familiar with septic lately. It has to be tested five times, I believe it's five times the volume of the septic tank, three bedroom house, which he already has a three bedroom house on site, a prefab house. He's been sitting there for two years. And, you know, for that, it requires a, I think a thousand square foot or a thousand cubic foot septic. And, uh, but that means it has to pump five thousand gallons, two days in a row, into any, any arrangement of these holes. Tested this hole, we hold, test these holes individually. And you have to understand that this absorbs and when the clay saturates, it will eventually become impermeable. You know, so after prolonged use, that's why they test at such a high level. Now, I've been told many things, "That's not that important, we tested a higher level, the household is never gonna test, use this much." You know, I have an issue with that, they, why have the standard if we're not going to really pay attention to it? You know, that's not a mitigating factor, if it's not a valid point, then change the regulation. Anyhow, they got to the third hole, now we start daylighting down in this area. This, this has been going on for over a year during true drought years, we're still getting water percolating up. The final time, when we were doing the last test on it, we finally agreed, the dye test is inefficient, we've got everything going. Then we test, daylighting started and that's the time of the backhoe accident and I discovered this whole area here is now going to be compacted. And I said, "This is not a valid test." I have, um, many times, you know, I've got contact and this correspondence I've attached and given to you to read. And for every correspondence there, there's probably ten emails I have copies of and five conversations. So this, it's my concerns, anyhow. Grading. These areas were uncompacted fill, this one is being corrected now. A lot of this fill was because of a ranch road, erosion issues here, a ranch road is put across here. And there's some slight issue, this affects Wydell, unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. Got this fill site here, this is sliding and Mr. Bonnet from grading's been there to see it, I believe Jeff Thomas has been up to see it also. We've got, a lot of fill was placed here, we can look off old topo maps compared to, I have old topo maps, I've got new topo maps. I have aerial photographs done by flood control which can be provided, which show the difference. More loose fill was put here, this is outside the scope of this permit here where he recompacted this. So the answer I got when I queried it was, it's outside the normal scope of the permit, doesn't require modifying or it doesn't require compaction, doesn't, but there's thousands of cubic yards that were brought in.
Mr. Brown, I'd like to interrupt you, but the issue before us today is the, is the new development envelope.
Yes.
I'm not sure we can deal with other parts of the property or things that are happening, are these within that envelope or are they outside of it?
They're involved in that envelope. Because this mud flood, this mud up here, this stuff here, that slid, this slid came down, came onto this envelope before, trans, come, I came across it and dumped onto my property. And we'll get to that slide, I'll move ahead because I'm, I'm taking way too much time here and I appreciate the ability to present myself, so.
Yeah, you can wind up and appreciate it.
Okay, uh, it's fill site, it's extra yards, extra, uh, no king, uh, four slides. Plug drainage system when they come down, they've been elaborate drainage, it looks great, he's put a lot of work into it. There's a few things that ought to be changed, it's my, I just wanna, I'd like to see some changes put in there. I'm not objecting to moving in, I like him, he's a good man. Major slide caused improper build road, James promised to build, enough said on that. Major slide in two thousand eight is witnessed by grading, uh, when it slides again, will plug drains, redirect water in an uncontrolled manner. It should be fixed. My contention, drainage. Here we have what happened in a mild rain, we had inch and a half in two days. None, these berms up here where he put this fill, this is all loose fill that's put in outside the scope of the permit. These are my heds that he wants me to cut down here. This blew out, came down and dumped considerable amounts of mud, debris, uh, stuff. This, this happened, a drain plugged, there's no passive bypass. If they slope these things, this concentrate, this, this comes down and concentrates water all coming toward the property line. He's got mostly a ground level, some of it above my ground level, loose rocks with a, with a, some kind of a grout underneath. This is a simple thing, a light rain in two drought years and I've got this stuff dumping on my hundred cubic yards, dumping there. Two thousand three, James owned property, no improvements. Major flood then, we had, maybe we had big floods, we had a couple, two back-to-back, uh, very close proximity, big years. No major damage. He owns a property, claims expensive drains, drought year, major damages. This silted in, caused stuff to overflow, this is where his dry wells are, this is his three bedroom house already on site. Minimal rain, drains has centered in, it hasn't been repaired, but no major corrections. This mud flowed out here, past our riding arena, down the dirt road, doing damage to that also. This berm, which was originally put in to be higher than the compacted pad behind it, was, fill was brought in after that, which raised it so it overflowed here, causing this, depositing debris and this catch basin causing this to flood. Instead of digging the ditch into the ground, if, if, many of it's higher than, higher than the property level here on the downhill side. Again, we got more photos. All right, this plan was developed after that, invented of the highest and best practices to implement the drainage system for the twenty-five year storm. We had a minimal rain and we had a problem with it. And I asked him to help clean it up, his lawyer wrote to me a letter denying that it ever happened. I have, I'm sorry, hurt my feelings. In two consecutive years, okay, we had two five hundred year storms with no major damage. Recently, we had two consecutive drought years with more damage. Okay, this is not despite his best engineering, but because of it. I mean, not that a lot of it's good, we can be fixed, it can be modified, but it hasn't been done. You know, summary, it just got the, um, you know, septic issues, very expansive soil. Has failed to, or daylight it for every test we've done. Now they've reduced it, well, the test from, the approval letter from, uh, Mr. Jensen is approved for a maximum of two bedroom house. He already has a three bedroom on it, you know, what are we gonna do? You know, um, I, I, I say that, you know, it needs, it's been recompacted, we've got, uh, must have proper testing for the home that's actually there. The compaction is, is an issue for dry well absorption, if anyone...
Thank you, I, I think I need you to wind up.
Okay, I'm done.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, is your, excuse me, Mr. Commissioner, I have a question.
Sure, Commissioner, please.
Is your house, the house up on top?
It is.
Okay, and, and what does daylighting mean?
The water coming from, I'm told it's not affluent if it goes more than a hundred feet. Okay, under, underground before it comes up, it's only daylighting. But according to the county code, you can't daylight on someone's property either.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you also.
Mr. Brown.
I, I got, I'm sorry I got lost somewhere in your presentation, but I guess my, my question has to do with, what you were describing is, the, the, not only the, the fact that there's been fill there, but some of the problems that have been associated with it.
Exactly.
As well as sort of the topography of the site.
It's a very difficult site to build on, very challenging.
Right, so is it just that the fill has caused this problems or it's both, it's because of the topography and the way it's this bowl shaped?
The, the bowl shape, the topography, the fill.
Everything.
Everything that's been done, the improvements that have been, have been made uphill have all, all impacted.
And improvements uphill.
Meaning, Mr. Salentine.
On his property, okay, thank you, all right.
Great, thank you, next speaker is Jessica Brown.
Uh, if we could have her come, she's in surgery right now, hopefully she'll be here shortly, if she could, someone else could go first and then she can wrap up.
Okay, Jeff James?
Thanks for letting me speak. I'm the prior owner of that property, I'm the one that got the, uh, the permit or that did the fill that's in there now. I was the owner of the property at the time. And what happened back in ninety-five was, we had a big storm, it was that hundred year storm, dirt was all over the place. The county came to me and said, "Hey, can we use your area here to fill?" And I agreed to it, we, we got the permit together. Granite construction, I even had them sign a letter, but you, you gotta go create this entire fill according to county standards, compaction and the whole bit. And the inspector was there, the flood control was there, and the whole thing was done to county standards. And where they're coming up with all this uncompacted fill, uncompacted fill is, is a mystery. I think it's just coming up to try and throw off, uh, you know, this project. There were some comments made about what I had said in the, in the past regarding, uh, prior to the sale of my property. That is untrue, we never said that. We, I, I, I don't know why you're bringing that up because it's, it's unrelated to this, but it just shows that, there's just some, some sort of animosity here that, that they're trying to stop this project to go forward. John is a great guy, I've known John for over twenty years. Oh, by the, oh well, I'll get to that in a minute. John's a great guy, I'd love to have him for a neighbor, he's, uh, got a great family and I look forward to when he moves in. And all I was gonna say is I wanted to support John in, in his effort and get him, get him onto the property. I mean, some of the things that were said here just have, have got me frying. So I'd like to go back to, uh, your slide. The first slide, the, the one that you put on. I just wanna talk about that, that one slide. The, it's, we've had, do I have a pointer? This thing? No, the one before that. Uh, the first one you put up, it was the property.
Please, please stay.
Aaron mentioned earlier that...
You need to get the microphone, please.
Okay, sorry.
We're recording this for posterity, we don't wanna miss anything.
All right, good. Aaron mentioned that there was a slide right here. That slide was caused by the Gleta Water District, I've been on this property for twenty-five years. When Gleta Water District put this water line in, this used to have a slope to it, like a normal hillside, just slope like that. When they were through, they had a, like a road coming down. It was, it was flat. And so what happened was the road, and I, I called the Gleta Water District about this and tried to get them to come out and fix this slide. But, so what happened was, this was a straight path down, so when the water, it didn't sheet off of this anymore, the water came down, hit that path that was cut by the Gleta Water District, then went down the hill and, and ate away at the, this hillside and it was, and it was a relatively minor slide. But that's what that was, it wasn't, had anything to do with instability of the hillside. It had to do with when the Gleta Water District back in, whenever it was, eighty or ninety, eighty-seven? When, when, when they put that water line in, that was the cause of that slide. So I just wanna clear up those things. Do you have any questions for me about, about this?
See no questions, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lynn Behrens, Behrens, I'm sorry, Behrens, thank you.
My name is Lynn Behrens and thank you for hearing me. I work for Harold Frank, who is the owner of twelve thirty-five to twelve seventy-five Franklin Ranch Road. And the driveway that they're speaking of from Franklin Ranch Road to, um, Mr. Brown's property and Mr. Salentine's property is on an easement of the Frank property. I just want to say that, um, I have been on the property since, um, October of oh-four. My experience with Mr. Salentine has been exemplary. He always contacts us with anything that remotely might affect our property and has been extremely cooperative about any issue that even, you know, any small issue. And has been a great neighbor already, even though he's not on the property. And he's been just outstanding about taking more than his share of the property, the maintenance on that easement and the maintenance on the joint, um, sharing of the Franklin Ranch Road because it's right in the middle of, of all private property, so we all take a share. I'm making sure tree maintenance, there's, you know, as you know, there's a hundred things that come up. But he has stood up to the plate, spent his time, his energy and without anybody, you know, asking him about it, he, he calls you and says, "I think this, you know, this tree fell here and I'm gonna take care of it." And always stays in contact, you know, with everybody. So I, I particularly think that sense of responsibility is all the signs of a good neighbor. And we're looking forward to having... responsibility is all the signs of a good neighbor. And we're looking forward to having you as a neighbor.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's my last speaker's slip, so I will now, oh, excuse me.
Because I'll speak, my wife apparently got held up.
I'm sorry, we've already taken your testimony.
Okay, um, there's some things that were said that were uncorrected.
I understand. We're, we're not gonna have this be a debate. So, having the last speaker's slip, I'll close this to public hearing. Commissioner Brown?
I, I have some more questions of, uh, Mr. Briggs, and that has to do with the septic. I don't suppose Mr. Jensen's available?
No.
Okay.
He's not physically here, but we could call him.
No, I don't, okay. What I don't understand is about some of these daylighting issues. Particularly, there was one slide that, uh, was put up, I'm not sure who put it up, it's towards the end, about, uh, if it's more than 100 feet in daylighting, and it's clear water, it's okay, even though it goes into the creek or something. I don't understand those issues, and I don't understand that issue, that any of the daylighting issues in relation to any septic that might be placed on this parcel, and, and how would the county look at that, or control it, or approve it? And maybe those are issues that Mr. Jensen has to respond to.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I did speak with Paul Jensen in anticipation of this issue today, extensively, on the phone yesterday. And this property and these dry well tests were scrutinized unlike any other dry well tests that have occurred in this county. They brought in a special kind of dye, some kind of radioisotope that they add to the water, and, that, that when the water goes through the soil, it stays with the water instead of getting filtered out with the soil. And they use this dye in those tests, which is not standard procedure. This is above and beyond, way beyond. They use that dye at the request of Mr. Brown, and-
Excuse me, thank you. I, we just can't let you speak, I'm sorry. Thanks.
And Mr. Jensen was satisfied with the results of the test. And he is our environmental health services representative, and he is confident in the outcome of those tests.
The, the question about daylighting, and this is something new, I hadn't heard about it before, but are, is there the potential for daylighting, um, of the effluent from the septic systems?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, because Mr. Brown's property is lower in elevation than Mr. Salentine's property, it's a possibility. But through these tests, they were not able to absolutely determine that the Salentine dry wells were daylighting on Mr. Brown's property.
Okay. But let's, let's fast forward and say-
I think, I think-
Mr. Chair, um, I just spoke with, um, Mr. Jensen on the phone, and rather than hear this secondhand, he's gonna go over to the Ben Aravia Center, and you can ask him your questions directly, because I think it'll be more effective.
Yeah, I think we need to hear it from him, right, on this issue. So how would, so-
Let's, if I may suggest, if, let's see if there's any other questions. If not, we'll trail this issue, follow the next item.
Right. I'm not sure how long it's gonna take Mr. Jensen to get there.
Well, I'm-
Five minutes, so maybe we should just take a break?
Oh, that'd be fine.
Let's just do that.
Well, let me ask, are there questions of other commissioners' staff, other than the septic issue? I have none, except for that one too, so we'll just take a five-minute break, and we'll hear from Mr. Jensen.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe we're gonna hear from Mr. Jensen in the Santa Maria office. Yes, Mr. Jensen. Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
Good morning, Mr. Jensen.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning. My question has to do with the septic and some of the issues that a neighbor has brought up concerning the septic. I wonder if you could, first of all, just tell us, um, what, what, um, what you have done to ensure that there is, there could be an appropriate septic system here? That's the first question. And the other question has to do about daylighting, which I'm not, it's a new term to me, on somebody else's property.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown. Um, there has been, I went out on the site, um, and met with all the interested parties, plus engineering geologists. And, um, there was some discussion as to one of the dry wells that apparently was daylighting, and it was fairly close to the property.
We've lost our feed here. I need you to back up a little bit. We lost your feed for about 10 seconds there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Where, where did, okay, we were on the property, uh, we, uh, there was some discussion as to one of the dry wells, um, actually daylighting when they tested it. So what I did was I disqualified that dry well, said we, we, we will not accept this, um, because of this, um, you know, what everybody seemed to agree was causing a problem. And all the further dry wells were farther back from the property line, and they were, they were, um, tested, um, at least once more. I think Mr. Salentine has some additional testing that he did on his time. Um, and there was never any confirmation of any further water, um, appearing on Mr. Brown's property. The original testing, uh, we did, we tested the dry wells with, uh, fluoresceine dye, which is used by the health department to, uh, verify whether, um, daylighting is occurring. It was negative. There was never any, um, ever any indication that of any of that fluoresceine dye, um, you know, getting into, uh, that water. But that was early on. Now, um, the testing itself is, uh, the, the county standard is five times a septic tank capacity. And there was several other fairly shallow dry wells drilled into Rincon Formation, which underlays the site. And Rincon is notorious for being a poor absorption, absorber of water. Uh, but, but we had to confirm that the site met the minimum standard for, uh, a residence. Now, they drilled several other dry wells, and combined, they had an adequate amount of absorptive capacity. The county standard is, um, five times a septic tank capacity. Now, that being said, it was the, it had proved up at least a minimum of 3,750 gallons per day of absorptive capacity. And in a memo, I wrote to, uh, planning and development staff that, that this was adequate for a one- or two-bedroom residence. There was no indication of, uh, of any of daylighting during those tests, that, that testing. And again, Mr. Salentine did some other stuff on his own. The, the 3,750 gallons per day is roughly 20 times what a house, uh, the, the volume of effluent generated by a house. The house, uh, they use about 200, 220 gallons per day, um, as a flow figure for a residence, for a three-bedroom residence. And, um, with, this is a 20 times safety factor that we're, we have employed to assure that there is, there is adequate absorptive capacity. Now, it, the, the soils are marginal, but the, the testing has indicated that it's, while marginal, it's adequate for a one- or two-bedroom house.
Um, is there some condition, or, I don't have a copy of what your letter said. But you've indicated by your testimony that, um, what septic, that a septic system could be put in place adequate for a one- or two-bedroom house. And once, uh, Mr. Salentine decides to put a dwelling there, there would be that limitation on the one- or two bedrooms. I mean, he would not be allowed to do-
Yes, that's correct. That would be a separate ministerial application, uh, subsequent to this approval.
I, I understand that, but there is somewhere that somebody knows that there is that limitation?
Well, it would be borne out in all the testing. So, while it would, might not be recorded on the map, it would definitely, uh, uh, show up on the, uh, the, the testing.
So-
Where they, I'm sorry.
So the testing would, so follow, follow-on testing would determine the size of the house that he could place there?
Yeah, because the criteria, see, the septic tank is sized by the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
So if you had, say, a five-bedroom house, you know, that would be a 1,500-gallon tank, and that would require five times that, uh, for your dry wells. Well, this, it would be very unlikely at this site that you'd get that kind of absorptive capacity.
Okay.
So it, it sort of backwards, uh, determines the, the size, the number of bedrooms in the house.
Okay. And the other question, uh, Mr. Jensen, is about daylighting. Is it possible that, um, even though with your testing, that, um, there could be daylighting, and if there were, what would be the remediation for that daylighting, should that occur?
Well, I don't, none of this, daylighting was, other than that first dry well, was never, uh, you know, fully demonstrated. Uh, again, there's, uh, various dye testing, um, that was done, that, and all that was negative. Um, in the event that there is some kind of failure, uh, there are alternative systems that could be put in place.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, but that's not the standard for a recorded map modification. So i- if, if, let's say we had a future failure, and there was no absorptive capacity at depth, you could use an alternative system to dispose of the wastewater.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions to the commission? Thank you, Mr. Jensen, appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Seeing no further, uh, questions, are we ready to close the public hearing? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Brown, this is your-
Thank you.
I believe.
Um, I'd just like to make some preparatory comments. You know, it's, this little area back, um, behind the city of Guelita's, to me, is very interesting. It's, it's rural, but it's right next to all the great urban services that we have. Um, what I found interesting about this, this site is that it's a very difficult site, and we can see by some of the concerns of the neighbor, it's made more difficult by some of the things that have happened on the site, um, and some of the constraints, uh, that, that occur, that occur there. Now, that doesn't mean that one couldn't put a dwelling here. Um, I, um, I support the, um, this development envelope. Um, there's obviously procedures beyond, um, where we are with what's before us, should problems occur, and I think Mr. Jensen has outlined them. But, um, with that, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners if they have any other comments or concerns before we go forward.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. Um, dealing today with the proposal for the map modification, based on staff report, um, I see, you know, there are no significant impacts. Listening to, uh, Mr. Brown's presentation certainly, you know, raises questions, but I think all of them, as I read the staff report for what we're dealing with today, um, I'm sure some of those other issues, you know, will be addressed at a different time. It is a problematic parcel, as Mr. Salentine pointed out, but he certainly, uh, you know, is doing, you know, what he can. He's making, you know, very significant improvements. And, um, I think, you know, he is getting good reports from neighbors as far as a person, you know, who will abide by any rules and regulations. The one thing I was glad to see, I know in one of the letters, there was some concern about weekend, um, construction, but that has stopped, and I see that that part, um, that proposal, you know, has been put aside, and I'm glad to see. And I believe Mr. Salentine, you know, will abide by the, um, work hours that are existing here. Uh, going back to the compaction, what I was reading in the staff report, um, it says that it is compacted now to 90 percent, and then it would probably have to be further compacted, um, for residential development, even, you know, a prefab home of this type, and that they are saying that, um, you know, that could be mitigated with the drill pile and the grade beam foundation system. Would that be necessary for the type of, uh, structure that's there now?
I'll answer that. It just depends.
It depends.
Yeah, the architect and the soils engineer will make that determination.
Okay. All right. I, I was curious about that. Just reading, you know, in the staff report, that, that's the situation. Okay, and then, um, as far as the septic, it looks like that is a problem. According to staff report underwater resources, you know, when the, uh, refined project goes through, they'll be hooked up to the Guelita Water District. Um, you know, if, uh, as was just mentioned by Mr. Jensen, if the three-bedroom home that's proposed, you know, for the, uh, the bowl area in the new envelope, um, they'll have, they'll have to work accordingly. So I, uh, I, even though the, some of the problems exist, I too, um, you know, would support the map modification. I am concerned, just as a side note, about the eucalyptus trees. And after driving over 154 yesterday and seeing, uh, you know, some of the remains of the Jesus Seeta fire, and knowing my daughter was burnt out in the T-fire, and I know it was because of the eucalyptus trees that were hanging over her little garage unit, um, I'm, I was very surprised to see the new planting of eucalyptus trees, and even though the, uh, existing grove is quite beautiful. What a fire hazard. But anyway, I would support today's, um, map modification.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, when I read the staff report, I had three items that I was concerned about. One was a line going through from the Kachuma, uh, operations water process, and it seems like that's all right. It's been explained. The other question I had was concerning the amount of fill, but according to the staff report and what I've heard here is that there's been adequate, uh, structural, uh, it's considered adequate for structural development, you know. I guess there was compaction and so on. Then the third item I had was, it caught my eye, was under, under the comprehensive plan designation. It says that one dwelling unit per five acres, and I understand that there's a mobile home type, uh, not mobile home, what do they call them?
Modular home.
Yeah, one of those homes on there. So how do we meet the requirement by one permanent? Can that other one continue as a, as an added, some other designation?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, um, per the ordinance, this zoning allows for what we call a residential second year.
RSU?
Correct.
Okay.
And with a maximum size of 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so those were the three items that caught my eye, and it looks like they're all all right. Just a mode, a note of interest, I remember when Mr. Brown first came to us about five or six years ago, and he was, we needed to make an exception for him of some sort, and I remember his wife was in surgery in Oxnard at the time, or something. I was trying to make it up here. So I do remember you. I've been to the site several times. So with that, uh, I'm prepared to, uh, support the project.
Yes, would you like to make the motion?
You have no comment?
I have no comments.
Okay. Um, I would just like to make some, uh, other comments. Um, you know, we are here for the recorded map modification for the second development envelope. Mr. Brown has pointed out some problems, or some problems that he has felt, um, with the site. It doesn't mean that to say the site is easy and clean and neat, um, but I've heard from, uh, Mr. Jensen, and, uh, I have full confidence in county staff that when any, um, dwelling is allowed on this site, that there will be appropriate actions taken to ensure that all requirements are met. So with that, I would like to, uh, move the, um, staff's recommendation and adopt the required findings for the project specified in attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, approve the addendum, contain in attachment D and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as attachment B as revised.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Ms. Hopland, if you'll read the roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Publicaries 40.
I think we're gonna try and skip lunch today. We'll take the next item if we can get set up for it right away. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, members of-
If you'll, wait, one second. Ms. Hopland, if you'll read this next item?
The Montecito Planning Commission will receive, or Montecito, the county planning commission will receive a report on the status of the South Coast Highway 101 HOV lanes widening project.
Now we're ready, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Greg Hart. I'm with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, and I have with me today also Scott Eads, who is the project manager from Caltrans for this project. And I'd like to just take a little bit of time and put the effort to widen the 101 freeway into context, and then talk a little bit more about specifically the phase of the project that we're here to talk to you about today. Um, as you know, right now, if you drive out on the freeway, the first phase of the freeway widening from Milpus and Santa Barbara down to Hot Springs, Cabrillo, and Montecito is under construction. And the project's going very well. We had one little hiccup- one little hiccup back in the spring with the state's fiscal crisis at that time. We're a little concerned that the situation might also lend itself to that problem again coming up. But we're trying our best to make sure we have some contingency plans in place. We do have funding at the local level through Measure D that we may be able to use to continue the project in the event that the state gets into a very tough fiscal situation again and the project's in jeopardy. But stepping back from it, it's going very, very well. The, the problems that people perceived with traffic congestion from the congestion related to the construction has not really been a problem. And, and we're very hopeful that we're going to be able to make that project hit its milestones, being completed by 2012. The second phase of the project actually starts down in Ventura County at Mussel Shoals, where the freeway goes from three lanes down to two. And it will be widened with a carpool lane. This is, the phase two will actually be the first time folks see a carpool lane. But ultimately, we'll go back and convert the first phase also to a carpool lane. The, the second phase down in Ventura County will come all the way up to Carpinteria Creek. There's a problem at Carpinteria Creek with the flood capacity of that creek. FEMA's done some new mapping and determined that the culverts on that creek aren't sufficient for future flows. So we're going to actually have to raise the, the grade of the freeway at that stage to add additional capacity. And that actually causes a little bit of a problem for phase three, because the interchanges in Carpinteria at Linden and Cacitas Pass won't have sufficient height clearance if we raise the grade of the freeway. So that, that will be the next phase down in Carpinteria. The, the funding for phase two is actually fully in place, and we're getting very far along in the permit process. We still have some work to do with the Coastal Commission to make that finally done. But design work's proceeding, and we hope to have that project under construction in 2011. So just in a couple of years, we're going to have both ends of the freeway under construction at the same time. As I mentioned, we're, we're getting very close, working with the city of Carpinteria on phase three, trying to come to some design decisions about some of the offsite improvements. There's a lot of other pieces involved in that project, like an extension of Via Real to provide some better connectivity within Carpinteria. And we actually have a hearing coming up with the Carpinteria City Council on June 29th. That's an evening hearing at 5:30. And we're going to be talking with them about some of the issues that they have with the design for that project. This is the first time in this overall effort that we run a little bit short of funding. We have money for the design and all the environmental permitting work. We also have about $30 to $40 million available for construction, but the total cost is about $70. So we have a shortfall somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 to $40 million. And we're going to have to go out and get some other funding sources, either at the state or federal level, to supplement the money that we've already earmarked to make that project happen and also begin construction by as soon as 2012. And then finally, you know, what is clearly the biggest portion of this freeway project, from Montecito all the way down to Carpinteria, it's about 10 miles. We're calling it the, the South Coast 101 HOV project. As I mentioned before, ultimately, the entire corridor will be converted to a carpool lane. And the, the style of carpool lane that we're thinking about for this corridor is more, typically in Northern California, where it only operates during the peak traffic time. It's not 24 hours a day. The congestion that we experience here in South County still is kind of a peak-driven event. And so we think that having that capacity available for carpools during the peak time is really going to be the best solution for our environment. The, the environmental process is really beginning now. We're going to be having scoping hearings down in Carpinteria and in Montecito on July 7th and July 8th. Those are public meetings. The, the meeting in Carpinteria is from 5:30 to 8:30, or 5:30 to 8, excuse me. And also the, the meeting in Montecito. The Carpinteria location is the Cannolino School, and the Montecito location is the Montecito Country Club. We're doing extensive noticing. There'll be ads in the papers. We're, we're mailing to adjacent property owners and interested parties. And we'd love to have, you know, as many people as possible come, tell us what issues we need to consider. There's a whole host of, of issues that we are going to be evaluating. And in fact, the, the staff-level project development team has been working for more than a year on some of these studies. We're in partners with the county of Santa Barbara, the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Carpinteria, SB CAG and Caltrans, all working together. Ms. Black actually serves on that project development team, and we've been working closely with the county. But this is a huge undertaking, and the design of this freeway is very, very important for the community. We're essentially studying three different alternatives, and, and obviously the no-build scenario through the environmental process. The first scenario is kind of a hybrid. We're looking at it literally mile by mile. How would you maximize the landscaping that exists there in the corridor right now, whether the most valued segments are to the outside or to the inside, literally seeing where the trees are, trying to make the, the design as sensitive to the existing situation as possible? The other alternative that we're studying is kind of a, a more extreme view, which was basically, what would you, what would it take if we were to preserve all the landscaping on the outside to the maximum extent possible and thus eliminate the interior landscaping? And then the third alternative is the other way. It's maintaining the median landscaping and then changing the outside landscaping to, to affect that, that change. We are trying to, and one of the principles that's guiding the design of this project is to try and use the existing Caltrans right-of-way. It's just too expensive and too disruptive to imagine, you know, large-scale property acquisitions in this corridor. The budget we have for this project is in the $400 million range, something, you know, 380 to 480 kind of a range. And unfortunately, we only have about $140 million of that currently identified. That was through Measure A that the voters approved this past November. That money was, was allocated county-wide. Both segments of the county are sharing in that cost since it's a regional facility. And it does give us a huge advantage in going out and seeking other funding sources, having that locally predicted and, and permanent funding source available. But it is going to be a task to go out and get another $300 million to, to have this project continue on schedule with the ideal construction period starting in 2014. It is very unlikely that this segment will be constructed in one piece. More likely, it'll be a series of phases, as you see the other segments too. Probably something on the order of maybe three to four phases for the 10 miles. And in that environment, we probably could do two phases at the same time. So you'd have constructions at the north and at the south ends of the corridor going on at the same time. I think that really gives you the flavor for what we're doing. And you obviously will have a big role to play in this. The county of Santa Barbara is one of the permitting agencies, along with the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Carpinteria, the Coastal Commission. This is a huge multi-jurisdictional effort. It's going to require a lot of coordination and a lot of, of work together. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Eads as well, and look forward to your comments.
Commissioner Brown.
I don't have so much a question as I do a comment. On weekends, I travel on the southern portion of, of this part. And it's interesting to watch how the construction is going on, but the roadway is still clear. And I just think it's so clever how all these engineers do that. I don't know. I mean, you just do it so it's like it's, nothing's happening. So I think that's really great. And I, and my other comment is that, and I'm glad you did mention, Mr. Hart, about how important design is to the community. Because I remember way back when, when you were considering this, you were looking at landscaping issues. And I know the community is very, very concerned about that. And I know that you'll take care and concern with that. You've done, there's been some recent landscaping efforts up in my neighborhood, in the Galita-Patterson area, and it's just been fabulous what they've done. Of course, you're not taking additional right-of-ways, just replacement plantings or additional plantings. But I, I know that that is an issue for the community, particularly in, in those areas. So I know you work your hardest and your best to make sure that it really looks, has the Santa Barbara beautiful look. So, thank you. And I guess the other thing, I just see that there's some gas tax money here that's some of the, where you're hoping to get some funding. But if our good old governor takes away gas tax money...
It is, it's a very challenging environment right now to, to put together the funding to make this project happen. But, you know, the gas taxes are being paid on a, on a daily basis. And our share of the county level is significant. So we're going to have to make some priority decisions at the SB CAG level as to which projects are going to get funding at what, what point in time. But the most important thing, I think, to make sure this happens, is to get all the design work and the permitting done to the community's satisfaction, so that we can be ready when the funding becomes available as well.
Well, thank you for all you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Very much for those nice comments.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please don't leave. I have questions on 2:46 after the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks, you have questions?
Just a question. Are any of these projects eligible for the tart bunnies?
No, unfortunately not, because the, the criteria for the federal funding was that it was shovel-ready. And we're not quite ready yet with any of these projects, except for the one that's under construction and is already funded. But that is a good lesson in that we need to be ready if there's a subsequent opportunity. And that's the point of doing this work, is so that in the future, we're, we're going to be ready for those fund, federal funds, or state funds, wherever they come from.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
So are we done? We're done. Have a nice, have a nice week.
Will be the special hearing on the 29th.
29th bundy, yes. Thank you.